I was concerned about. Was it the police department having meeting with her and her staff members at the library? A meeting was held with library staff, youth detective Jager and myself. During the meeting, staff members wanted to know what kind of drugs to look for. Complained about teenagers visiting the library, moving into drugs, about staff members confiscating e-cigarettes from teenagers. And how the staff were concerned about teenagers visiting a popular convenience store. Called Mariner Convenience at Three Level Mariner Avenue, which is possibly selling marijuana and other illegal products to. A few weeks later, Detective Jager began to receive complaints from school officials about the same store at Three Level Mariner Avenue. School officials were concerned about teenagers visiting the store to purchase marijuana and illegal products. Detective Jager also received complaints from local parents who were seeing an influx of teenagers visiting the store. Our bicycle officers on Mariner Avenue. Were assigned to the business district, also saw it to see a substantial number of teenagers visiting the store. An investigation commenced, which confirmed that the store was indeed selling marijuana in Mariner. Violating our local village code under chapter one forty-three. On September the seventh, I received another complaint. About Mariner Convenience Store from the president of Mariner Chamber of Commerce. In which she voiced her concerns as well as as that of other members of the chat of the chamber about the store. On November fourth, after further investigation, detectives, with the assistance of Officer Ramos and A nine Vincent, discovered the following items. One hundred eighty grams, one hundred eighty-nine grams of marijuana, ninety-seven pre-rolled marijuana cigarettes, flavored e-cigarettes. THC vape oils, CBD flavored gums, THC flavored gummies and Delta eight THC. The one was placed under arrest and the illegal products were confiscated. A public nuisance abailing law would give us more authority over illegal activity and business. And send a message that if they engage in illegal activity, their business will be shut down. A public nuisance abailing law would further help the police department continue to investigate complaints of criminality in our village. To eliminate illicit businesses from our community and help our children and communities stay safe. I would I would propose the following sections to be included in our proposed nuisance law. Any marijuana of any kind or any controlled substances that's according to New York State Public Health Law thirty-three zero six. Any controlled substances being sold in the New York State Penal Law two twenty. Any offenses involving cannabis, of New York State Penal Law two twenty-two. Any offenses involving gambling, the New York State Penal Law two twenty-five. Any prostitution offenses on the New York State Penal Law two thirty. Any individual that's arrested for criminal nuisance in the second degree under the New York State Penal Law two forty point forty-five. Any individual arrested for criminal nuisance in the first degree under the New York State Penal Law two forty point forty-six. Any New York State alcohol beverage control violations under sixty-five and one, two, three of the alcohol beverage control law. And any business structure or real property used for the purpose of a business activity. Or enterprise which is not licensed by the federal government, state or local law and ordinances. If you're signing consideration.
Questions?
Any questions?
The um, the mention of the board's action to uh, uh, the decision to opt out of the legal marijuana sales. Uh, it's my understanding, had we opted in, had the village opted in. The actions at that store would have still been illegal, am I correct?
If there's sounds in children, correct?
Yeah, right. So, so uh, that really has no bearing on uh, on 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 it at all, right? I mean, so I don't understand what, why we mentioned that, but that's just that, that's just me. In other words, this is, these, these are, these are illegal sales.
So specifically, we're talking about illegal activity, right? On the chapter one forty-three, that's illegal right now. You know, like I said, I I delineated several different violations that are involving criminality. This is something that's not the murder of the century, not the crime of the century, but it's illegal, right? So along with uh, selling marijuana illegally, they could be involved selling crack cocaine, heroin. They could involve chopping up vehicles for a calico birders. We have active investigations going on and this law would help us uh, bring it into those type of activities.
So with this law also, uh, if if uh, if a liquor store or a bar is selling to minors. This would allow you to more quickly close that establishment?
Correct.
Now, is there uh, like the free strike thing, I mean, if if someone walks in and it it. It's the first time you catch them sell them to a nineteen-year-old kid a bottle of whiskey or something, right?
So as a conversation, we can have, you know, a law with council, we could draw up some type of draft where if you want to be strikes, sure. Um, at the end of the day, I want to have something that the police department can use to close these set businesses down. Like I said. We're talking about one small thing here, marijuana, but the other things, right? And it's a very empty feeling to do an investigation for several months. Dedicate resources to this investigation and then make a safe arrest and the place is still open.
Right, and I know we've had that uh. That scenario with the massage balls that we're offering.
So our village code is very strict when it comes to massage balls, you need special permit. The inspection from the police department, people that work there have to abide by the laws. Built with built within the village code, so anytime we have something like that, it's very easy to close them down when getting into our neighborhood. Something like that, similar on the books now that we can investigate other types of crimes that makes. Our job a lot easier to enforce the law and get the businesses out of our community.
Now, do you know any other communities that do this right now?
So I uh, I sent the chief one from Village of Amherst, I believe, of New York City. It's uh, Donkers has one, New Rochelle has one, Mount Vernon has one. Pretty much the same, some certain things are a little different as far as the free strikes and you're out uh. Giving them notice, I mean, that's something again that could be drawn up through council and you can see what we like, what we don't like about other laws.
Has this um, particular law of other cities, um, how has it fared well with the residents or the communities? Has there been incidences where the the residents felt they were unjustly targeted or anything like that?
Um, my understanding is that these cases, this part investigates a complaint. Through their investigations, they either confirm or deny the complaint based on what they get from your investigation. If there is a business that's involved in criminality, I'm pretty sure the the community is not going to be against them being in their community. So I think that they can figure out.
So we're talking specifically about businesses and not necessarily, because um, I think in reading somewhere and maybe reading the law rather than what was presented. In the packets was um. It's uh, it could be um. A person's living quarters or dwellings, especially if it's not a brick and mortar, if people have businesses inside their homes. It what constitutes business is all.
As I said at the end of cases, um, any business or structure that should be licensed by the federal government, the state of the village code with me. Uh, there would be uh, there will be, it would get attached to the law, right? So um, if they're not abiding by these regulations, it would be subject to our uh, our enforcement.
Understood. I I only, I only ask because I just, I did, I do appreciate the law because then it helps you guys do your job better. Um, I just uh, in being mindful of uh, people, sometimes people being targeted based upon complaints and sometimes people, their complaints are um, could be. They're not valid, but also just targeting based upon individuals. So I'm just hoping that it doesn't end up being that people are just targeting. Individuals and that we're not saying that you won't do our due diligence to ensure that um. People are not being treated unfairly.
For example, even with this one, for this this store, right, we were the ones who actually received the complaints from, what it was, from parents, from the um. Chamber, so it wasn't not even initiated, it was other people where we got the complaints from and then. As a result, the person was, the clerk was brought in, he was arrested, issued appearance tickets and then he could go right back to the store and open up again.
Right.
So, I mean, who knows what other, I mean, I think we were doing everything he had that day, but we don't know if there was other stuff, maybe. Back or he called the owner and the owner put more items there, we don't know.
Got it. Thank you.
I visited that store on the way over here, just out of curiosity, uh, and um. It's not dissimilar in appearance, outward appearance to several other businesses uh, that that have that kind of um. Cutrim off, uh, and and rolling papers and and tobacco grinders and things like that. Um, so uh, is there any indication that illegal activity continued after you, you made your, your arrest, your uh?
So as of right now, we backed off a little bit, um, we gave them some space. Um, I don't want to dedicate more resources to this, I don't have this on the list.
Now, the closing authority for that, would that be this board or would that be the police department?
Uh, it could be a combination of both, it could be uh, us bringing the case to the village uh, justice. And giving authorization based on our investigation and our complaints that we've reached this conclusion and all the education. And uh, we'll go from there.
So, and you can, so if you have a code in the books, we see what's happening, we investigate, I think we can temporarily shut them down. But then if they wanted to reopen the establishment or something like that, now we have to go through the appropriate board. To see if they were going to totally revoke the permit, allow them to reopen again, I believe that's where we have to go.
So.
Mayor, if I may.
You may.
The way it looks to me from the laws that have been presented. This is, this winds up being an application to court, for injunction, it will not be a local court. It would be a Supreme Court in one place.
So if if the police department shut down a business for illegal activity, the the redress of that business is to go to Supreme Court?
Yeah, we we would have to go to Supreme Court.
Oh, we would have to go to, to get, to get it, okay.
Is that temporary?
I have, I have temporary. It may be, I I looked very quickly at the uh, New York symbol. There may be an ability to obtain, to impose a temporary remedy. But the, for a permanent injunction, we'll also have to be authorized by the board of trustees because every, I've also asked. And we have to be prosecuted civil.
I think then the other question to it, I don't, I'm not familiar with this route, but if they're in constant violation of their permit. Could you go before then just revoke that permit for that establishment? That that I don't know.
Yes, if if you are special permit conditions.
Yes.
And they're violating those special permit conditions, the building inspector can.
Right, but that building, that, a business such as that might not have a special permit. You know, if you're just opening up uh, a. A card store, shall we say, right? When you're selling cards, you don't have to get a special permit because that's, that's a lot on. So I I'm just concerned that there would be no controlling of that. Right, and then we become a controlling of.
I'm sorry.
That's right, it was only a major, I know, I'm sorry. No, I'm saying, I'm saying, under the code, there are some businesses that don't require a special permit, that don't have to go to any boards. Right, as a bright, so if it's an as a bright business and they're doing something illegal. Uh, then then you can't go like back to the zoning board to get this special permit revoked.
No, and the building inspector is only the local supervisor of occupancy, we're violating the building code, zoning code, et cetera.
So in that case, then it would have to come to the board of trustees, I think.
So a story, business that's in a retail zone.
Yeah.
And is selling at retail something illegal.
Right.
What sells a retail sale would not be violating the zoning code, I don't think. And uh.
But it'll be violating the nuisance law.
Right now, and if you adopt the new law, it'll be violating the nuisance law, that's right. I don't see it, the provisions here all say those temporary orders have to be issued by a court. That you don't have unilateral authority to uh, issue to stop it.
So so there would be due process before that.
Due process.
I mean, so I I understand what what the police department wants and and I, and I think it's a good idea. So I, is is there? You know, consensus on a board to allow the village attorney to fashion a nuisance law that is uh, workable for the village of America?
Yes.
Yes, I I'd like to see it though. Divorced from the marijuana question because um, because there are so many other things that can make a business a nuisance, noise, uh. Public drunkenness, uh, blocking the sidewalks, uh. Uh, selling to minors, uh, and it appears to me that this, this uh, business was selling uh, on. You have to be licensed to sell marijuana.
You have to be licensed to sell marijuana.
They were selling marijuana without a license.
Yeah, and right, in a, in a community that doesn't allow licenses.
Well, well, that, that, actually, that doesn't matter.
I understand, but they, they had no license and they were selling to minors.
That's, that's what, that's what concerns me is that we're, we're somehow um.
We'll, we'll, we'll take that on.
I think we should, should, I think we should avoid that in addressing this in the future because, you know, that could change.
So the original complaints were of children buying marijuana.
Yeah, I mean, I'm serious.
So it's just pretty serious, right?
And we have, and we have. Since where EMS had respond to high school or children who are under the influence, I can't guarantee it was from exactly that store.
Right.
But God forbid, we don't want to see something happen where a child dies, you know, seriously, because of, you know, they obtained something illegally in our jurisdiction.
We were trying to go that route, unfortunately, based on the law that was written. You have to have someone that's under eighteen years of age to uh, charge him with unlawfully dealing with a child or endangering the welfare of the child to be under seventeen, so. All our police officers are twenty-one years old, so we can't go that route. Can't go that route for our investigation, but we were able to put our undercover in there and we were able to purchase, so. You confirmed that they were selling marijuana illegally, right? Did we confirm that they sold to an individual child? No, but based on the investigation, we know they were operating outside the law of the village of Mariner, of chapter one forty-three.
Got you.
What, what dropped the laws on them?
Yeah, I I I think what we need is is a pattern of behavior. Uh, for any business that uh, habitually engages in uh, in disruptive activity.
Unlawful.
Unlawful activity and uh, because the the uh, the the sale of marijuana under any circumstances. Uh, without a license is a crime. And um, the sale to a minor is an additional offense, am I correct?
It's a misdemeanor, to sell marijuana without a license, a violation level offense.
But all these things uh, uh, can accumulate and I think that's what we're looking for is a, is a pattern of a, of a.
Criminal.
Criminal, yes.
Man, are you okay?
Yep.
Alright, so we will work on fashioning the law and as we fashion it, we will send it to you folks for your comments.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you bringing this to us and I I think it's a good tool to have in your tool belt in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, you're gonna be here for the regular meeting, right?
I'm going to be at the regular meeting, I don't know, was there also um, agenda talking about the operators?
Operating, yes, that came up.
You want to do that now?
Yeah, she's here, she might as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're here, yeah, let's do it now.
It's the next item, actually.
If it's okay with the board, what I'd like to do is have our office work with the chief and lieutenant.
Yeah, sure.
Develop the draft.
Without doubt.
Thank you. So, I'm going to give you just talk a little bit about park rangers that we have to kind of address the question that come up, so. Right now, we have two permanent park rangers. Um, so they work from April until the November. And basically, what your position involves, I kind of equate it to like a mall security, right? So they're therefore a presence, but they're to notify the police department, should there be any, you know, activity going on, any violations, things like that.
Observe and report.
Right, so they work uh, Monday through Friday, uh, in during April to November, from seven PM until eleven PM. And then on Saturdays and Sundays, they work from four PM till eleven PM. So what their responsibilities are is they go around to all our local parks. They look to see if they observe any violations, they try to ensure that everyone is acting appropriately. Um, so should they see a violation, they're supposed to notify the police department. They can also, you know, if they see someone coming into the park after hours, sir, park is closed now, you need to leave, something of that nature. Um. And what else, um, in terms of, you know, the times that they're, they spend at a park. It all just, it varies depending on how busy the park is. If one park is busier than another, they might just have to do a simple drive-by. Or if it's very active, they might stay there a little bit longer. Um, so I know that the record department had some questions um, that went to the lieutenant about park rangers. And I think some of the things that came up was we would agreed, we had agreed to um, issue them uh, like a spotlight. For for next season, so they're able to have even more of a visual disturbance of the park. Um, and some type of a megaphone that they can utilize too, so that they are able to be heard. Um, and we are, we've changed um, our record management system so that we're able now to track. If a park ranger calls in, um, some type of offense or violation, that we'll be able to run reports about that. Um, so I'm not sure what other questions you have.
Well, one of the things that I, and it came up at a committee hearing, a committee for the environment, was that um. Uh, it was stated that the the park rangers are uh, have so much, so much ground to cover that they don't often get out of their vehicles. Uh, and uh, and that doesn't seem to me that to be particularly helpful, except in maybe the broadest sense. Um, uh, what I would like personally, as a, as a trustee, I would like to see some enforcement authority. I would like to see um, uh, tickets, summons is written for vi- for violations, so the type of behavior we're trying to control. And I'd like to see that uh, that uh, the parks put on a schedule where uh, they are visited. On a regular basis that that is known to you and 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 the conditions are are cited, in other words. Is there graffiti, has graffiti appeared, are there people hanging out? Uh, are people um, there with dogs that 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 should, are the, what are the conditions? And um, and are we writing tickets now? Are are we writing tickets in the parks?
So as part of their job description, they're not responsible for issuing summons. They would have to call police officers, police officers and then issue the appropriate summons. Um, but in terms of the parks, there is no set timeframe, like I was saying, so if they drive by, let's say, Warren Avenue Park. And there's nobody there, they might only spend one or two minutes there and then make their way down to a different park. And if that park was busier, they'll spend a little bit more time there. So there is no, they are able to visit all these different parks, they also have a log sheet that they keep track of. So on the log sheet, they indicate the time they went there, was there any activity, were there any violations, things like that, so they do keep track.
They're not peace officers.
Correct, right, right, they're considered park rangers, and their job is just to observe and report, basically.
Will they ever? Years ago, what I, the the Harbor Police Hall, right?
So, so, right, so we do have one of the Bay constables who patrols Harbor Island during the daytime.
Right.
And he can issue the village code summons because he's a sworn peace officer.
Okay, I knew somebody was, okay.
Correct. Yeah, the only, I mean, in terms of presence, the only other thing that, you know, well, right now, there's only one that works per shift. We could bump it up to two, but that's going to be, you know, a budgetary issue to see if we have enough funding to increase that to two, to two park rangers per tour.
I mean, I, tell you the truth, I'd, I'd rather see the, the police. Uh, doing this uh, as part of their regular patrols, like maybe one unit like and 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 a specific park or 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 a. A procedure where they go by and that they, they. And if we had park rangers, that the park ranger would get out, look and check the condition of the park, because I see litter, I see this, I see that. I see evidence of people's, you know, whatever, whatever it is, that they get out and look at the park. Um, uh, if they're not peace officers, that they examine it. And uh, and and I would like uh, immediately, if there's a violation, somebody gets cited. Because that's, that's the kind of thing that will, that will correct behavior, otherwise you just, you know, by the time they call in, the officer gets down there.
Sure, and the, and the police officer do patrol the parks as part of their regular enforcement, however, you know, they can't be everywhere. So kind of in the beginning, how I equated it to like a mall security officer, right? So that they're kind of like the eyes and ears of the police department, can't be everywhere. So we have this extra unit out there, they assist us. So like I said, patrol does go into those, you know, with posts for service and everything else, they just, you know, can't be everywhere.
Alright, well, uh, I I I would say this, and I don't know how my, my fellow board members feel, but I'd like to see them getting out of the car. And looking at the park and 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 filling out a checklist of what they, what they see and what they, what they don't see. And I'd like to see it year round, uh, and um, and if we have to make adjustments. Um, but I don't think a, a, a drive-by patrol is particularly helpful, because I think we have lots of regulations in the parks that, that uh. That are simply ignored, that, you know, and I think, and I've been vocal, I think there's too many of them, we need to adjust them and all that, but, but. If they're going to mean anything, they have to be enforced.
And so like I said, right now, it's April to November, and that's just basically based on the volume of people who utilize the park during those times. Um, you know, again, would be something to look at budget-wise, if wanted to try to do that something year-round. Um, and then based on the availability of those current park rangers, if any people wanted to expand it to a year-round. Uh, enforcement, again, it's usually just April to November because that is the busiest season for the parks.
Does anybody have a, a, a dollar figure on what the park ranger uh, enforced program costs us now?
I would have to check.
Because that's, that, that's a, a, that's a, a, a body, a, a, a piece of money that I would like to. Maybe, maybe redeploy, re- reallocate, so we can get more of what we're looking for, I mean, I, I think. Uh, I think we need, uh, I think we need summons is written and I think we need uh, our, our rules examined and I think, you know, that there, there are things we. Need to pay attention to that I think we, we might not be, you know, I mean, people have an idea of what parks are important, what aren't, but I think they're all important.
Okay, so.
So budgetary.
So I can look at that for the upcoming fiscal year, I can take a look at that, and I can also see what other kind of opportunities might be out there. Um, other types of titles where um, they can issue the code, the village codes themselves.
Yeah.
Jerry?
Chief, they currently use one, um, Prius, do they, are they, are they jumping into PEO cars or they have their own?
No, they utilize a PEO vehicle, it's our enforcement vehicle that's not being utilized.
Okay.
We have magnets that are fixed to the vehicle, that indicate that this case happens in park reach.
And if it's appropriate, there's a provision in our code that I can designate individuals to write enforcement tickets.
They need a, they need a stipend, right? You have to give them a stipend.
So that might be a good wrapping to go.
They would, they would be, they would be paid and that would be part of their. Regular requirement, yeah, regular requirement.
So maybe I can speak with you.
Yeah, I'll show you, I'll show you that provision.
Okay, I think we'd like to take a look at that from the code, I haven't looked at it in regard to enforcement mechanisms in quite a while. So it should probably take some luck to make sure technically, they can do what you would like them to do.
Yeah, and and I would also, I mean, how many tickets have been written in the parks? Uh, what kind of fines are we getting? Uh, um, what are the, what are the violations? Um, and I, and I think we, we need some sort of um. Uh, I'd say a checklist and an evaluation that when the park is visited, you know, what did you see? Did you see uh, evidence of graffiti, did you see evidence of beer cans, did you see uh, uh, you know. Somebody, uh, evidence that somebody's been sleeping in the park, uh.
So I can confirm with them, right now, like I said, we do keep logs and from my recollection, they do indicate, um, you know, he's been playing tennis on the court.
Yeah.
They'll, what they observe is what they'll write down during that particular park check that they do.
But, but independent of that, I mean, in an empty park, what do you see? Do you see that, that, that it's being used properly, it's, you know, that, that, I'm interested in just.
Sure.
Staying on top of it, so we don't, we're not surprised.
Okay.
By things.
Alright, thank you, chief.
Thank you, thanks.
And we'll work with Jerry and we'll, we'll, we'll address it during budgetary times. Uh, we'll go on to the next, we have another village employee here who's here to talk about item one I. Or to hear us talk about item one I, uh, and I, I don't want to keep him waiting because I know he, he's got dinner waiting. Uh, window replacements at two thirty-four Stanley Avenue Park. Stanley Avenue Park's forming, I'm sorry, not, we don't have windows at Stanley Avenue Park. Is this, uh. Though we do need new equipment, it's Stanley Avenue Park, I heard that, I, I hear that quite often. Who wants to talk about the windows?
Uh, I want him to talk about the windows at the focus.
Okay, big guy.
You have to go through the process.
Fair work. Um, so we recently put um, some fixins into two thirty-four Stanley. Uh, water damage from windows leaking. Um, we got a price to replace the windows with um, historical. Matching windows that are. Double insulated and newer technology. Um, like I said, we just corrected all the water issues and the mold issues inside the building that we've been dealing with for many, many years. And some of the windows that are currently in that building have holes the size of my finger in the frame. So uh, recent rainstorms have continued to let water infiltrate the building and create more mold and plaster issues.
Which we can't keep up.
How much we talked, what, what's?
I'm looking for it, you know.
I believe it was a hundred and seventy-four, a hundred and seventy-five.
It was on the agenda last spring.
Yeah, I remember, I remember the discussion on it.
We're waiting for the second updated quote, so.
But in, in the interim, some of the repairs that we made have been damaged.
Have been on repair.
Yeah, so it's.
So, so we're maybe, we're, you know, in excess of a hundred thousand dollars for windows. Now, we had a couple of quotes earlier last year, April, no, this year.
This year, April.
April, April, something like, April, May, something like that. Um, those prices have gone up, geez. Explain, how many, what attempts have you made to get those updated?
So when we originally got the quote, I believe it was. Last December, January was the original quote. Um, I found a company out of Brooklyn who does replacement historical windows. Uh, the building is historic. Uh the building is historically designated, it's tagged, so that adds. A little bit of a challenge, it's not like we could just go to Home Depot and buy double home windows and put them in. Then the whole. Country went into charging more for everything, and it picked the second quotes up to about ninety five thousand. Then as time went on, things got worse, and now we're at close to a hundred seventy four, a hundred and seventy five.
Is is there any remedial um repair we can do to just stop the damage, or does it have to?
No, from my recollection, when that building was repaired a few years ago. Uh they repaired some of the windows, but it's it's not. That I could take a window out and put a window pane in, it's the actual frame of the windows.
The rod, the wood.
Their metal and the rod.
Yeah.
I could, I could take my finger and stick it through the metal.
So the solution has been to fix the windows so they don't open, right, that's that's kind of like a solution that they've tried, they put some.
Uh liquid masking. Just to try and prolong the inevitable.
And prevent the water from getting in when it rains.
For those who all know, two thirty four Mariner Avenue is where the community counseling center is. Uh the village owns that building, and uh the community counseling center uses it. And uh use it to great effect, and they're very uh. Very important in the community to help our youth and families who are struggling uh through. Problems of life.
And what, one of the problems with these windows are that they're not insulated, and so. They, they, we have, we have an architect here, so the. The the leakage, it's, you know, it's it's hard to keep the building cool in the winter, it's hard to keep the building warm in the summer, because it's just.
Is, is is there any other alternatives other than historical windows?
Probably not, like I said. It's it's not like a window in a house where it's a twenty four by thirty six inch window.
They're not standard size.
They're not standard size, I mean, some of these windows are. Nine feet tall, eight feet wide.
So whatever you get, they're gonna have to be custom windows.
So even if even if we went to Home Depot tomorrow and.
Gotcha.
Got windows for that, they'd have to mold together and.
Gotcha.
Put together and.
Alright, so it has to be done, it's just a matter of pulling the trigger. Is that really what we're here for?
And where does this money come from?
Uh you, me. Chief, B J, uh you know. We probably, we probably bonded. And uh paid off over twenty years.
And before many of the members uh joined, we spent um in excess of six hundred thousand dollars repairing this building. Uh Jeff did extensive work um after it was flooded on foundation, right? We had foundation work that had to be done, but that was paid for by Ida, so unfortunately, the um. The windows were not impacted by Ida.
So I've I've tried putting plexiglass up, just to keep the. Water out, but the problem with that is they're uninsulated windows, so you get the heat from inside the building and the cold outside. It creates like a rainstorm in the window cells.
And creates another, another method for water to damage the building.
Are, is there a way we can find a grant to help offset the cost eventually?
We could try to look for one, we do have a grant writer, we could ask, but, you know.
So can we move forward in like two paths, doing the windows and asking for a grant at the same time?
Yeah, I mean, uh there are um programs out there. Uh for buildings that are on the national register, or that eligible, eligible in the national register. Um I can certainly talk with their directors about that. We talked about doing a uh building condition survey, but I think this is more of an immediate need.
Yeah.
You know, I think it's easy to define what the issue is.
I think we know what the condition of the building is.
Is the uh is the future of this building in in uh in question at all, or is this something that we're gonna gonna be keeping, I mean, uh?
Yeah, I would imagine so, I mean.
So it's not going anywhere.
It's all building and.
The property that must be used for public health purposes.
Yeah.
And the community council center is uh, I I, you know, we've never really done uh. An audit, but I would I would bet you most of the children who go there are from the village of Mariner. Alright, so, this will have to pull the trigger.
Dan needs the quotes.
Okay.
When you get them, and then we'll send them over to Millennium, and then we'll see what we can get out of that, alright?
Jeff, while I have you up, uh for those who don't know, uh Mister On here, uh Mister On is the head of the recreation department. And uh. And uh Parks Department and Recreation Department this weekend put on a spectacular show for our kids. Uh down at Harbor Island Park, and I I just want to thank you, your staff, and the Recreation Department. For just doing such an excellent job and making it such a fun weekend for all the kids and the parents and the community.
Thank you, appreciate it.
The slot was a nice touch.
The next up. Is our friend, uh Mister De Angelis, the conceptual plan for new village hall. Because we want to just replace everything while we're doing.
Place anything that's old.
Yes, sure, please do.
And this is Brian Burke, senior member. So major subset of.
Give a slideshow too, what?
We do, um all of the, I guess, we can start with um E X one. And well, first things first, congratulations.
Thank you.
New members, welcome. So we were asked to take a look at what we can do with an existing site. It's it's a prominent site in the village, it's it's on high ground, it's a large site. Um can we work with this building, uh and this was after something, the discovery happened, so. Um that's what we really focused on, and then also looking at, and part of that is consolidating. You know, the departments here that need expansion, police, building department, some uh courts. As well as bringing back the uh village administrative work and treasurer and and manager offices. With some space for harbor master, and also from one twenty three Mariner Avenue, Regatta. And then also bringing in um space from the um some of the storage facilities that are offsite now, that the village is paying rent for. So consolidate them into this building, so um started on. So just to kind of give you a quick run through in terms of the overall uh. Layout here, let's see if I can do this with the uh help of the the pointer here. Um just for general orientation, we we did a bunch of preliminary work to, you know, develop drawings of the site. Uh Prospect Avenue here, here, we're we're in the courtroom right now, over on this side, on the right hand side, it's just things only. Police department entrance is over on on the left hand side, Plan, Plan West. Um Library Lane, library is over here on the left. Uh coming up Mount Pleasant Avenue, and then Johnson, you know, the guest room. So, you know, what, we have a lot of land here, and by the way, we had a survey updated to put in, bring in top graphical information, and it. You know, the the property is actually outside of this site, it comes a little bit beyond my brain. And um this is a municipal lot here as well, um so. Look at that.
Say that again, that's all our problem.
Yes.
On the other side of Johnson Avenue, going down towards Saint Thomas.
Even where the um the Washington Billhouse, all the lines is.
It's it's right, uh stop. So where this is the part, if you're coming up from um also supposed road, coming up Library Lane. Uh the parking lot on your left, Watch and Go is is right before that. Um and then sort of parking lot is really at the edge of this double, kind of double wooded parking lot here. So then, uh Ogie, if you wanted to scroll through this set of slides. I'm not gonna, we're not gonna look at each one every one, but it it gives you sense, we we did go through and draw the, those are the existing plans, you can keep it going, kind of fast forward. So I know we have live ground covered.
Yeah, and the process, the board should know how you came came about the space and the space needs and all that stuff.
So we started with going through documenting existing additions, we reviewed the prior reports that have been done. Um we got information, we showed that somebody had updated plans, this is all still one sixty nine where we are here today, the attic. Uh drove elevations, then we also looked at Regatta. Um and and the floor plan there and and how the space is being used, and and took a look over six fifty Austin Avenue. Um we had meetings in June and July uh with with the chief. Uh with with the judges, um and also with village administration with with Jerry and and Dan. Um and and some others. Um to understand how much more space is needed, so you know, not really even planning for the future, where are we deficient now? Um and from that, and then we developed these existing drawings, these drawings, three dimensional drawings of the. Existing site, um and. And and also with context, the white buildings are general representations of the surrounding houses and buildings, so we can see how it fits in. Um so then, so yeah, perfect, obviously you can stop here, um so what we did, and we we took this after our meetings. Um this, on the right hand side, are the three buildings. That are used by the village, the village hall, what we're calling, you know, old village hall, whatever, where we are now, one sixty nine Mount Pleasant, the Regatta. And and six fifty Olson, these are all to scale, uh you know, in terms of how much space they use, three floors of village wall and a courtroom. And and then we translate that into how much space the existing facilities are using, blue is police department. Tan is, you know, village management, village offices essentially, this lighter yellow tan is storage space. Um this was uh the court facilities. And as well as the building department facilities, and then we we create another category for what we're calling enhanced resiliency, was talking to Jerry. Made a lot of sense, what can we incorporate in here, it can also be in times of non emergency, hopefully more than those. But they can also be community rooms or other flexible spaces. And then the dance lines represent how much more space each of these departments need. So that's what we planned to, we planned to the, you know, the overall space, you can see the police department, you know, by their knees could fill up this whole building. Right, it wouldn't be the most efficient use, but they could fill up the whole building. Um similar to village hall, you know, that would take up two, two full floors of this building. So then I guess, Dan, if you can, I'm excuse me, pardon, if you can scroll up two plans, scroll down on the same one. Uh we'll skip the, well, this actually stopped here, thank you, the site plan, so. What can we, can we work with the existing building, let's take, that was our charge to look at this, you know, another, another exercise might be what if it's all. But there's there's advantages to this building, staying, it hasn't, you know, from a sustainability point of view, it has. Building, the structure is still sound, it has a lot going for it, we need to be completely cut it, um which is what we plan on doing. And then on the on the left hand side is a two story addition plus a parking garage underneath, which we incorporate all of the. Police department facilities, and on the right hand side would be on the first floor. I'll show you a little more detail, on the first floor would be courts, and also the village manager's office um on 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 the second floor. And then this reddish color would be um where community facilities are, so now, if you don't mind scrolling down. Couple, couple drawings here. Lower level, so lower level has parking, parking back for police department and as well as staff garage on the other side. And and then there's an elevator, we are incorporating suggesting two elevators. You know, one dedicated for the police department, especially if you're transferring detainees or whatever. Um and also just general daily uses, not to have to inter, not. Not that they don't want to interact with the public, but to go back police business as needed, and then then the public elevator would be more or less. In our current lobby quarters now. Uh yeah, next one on, Brian, Brian Priest. Um so this would be the first floor plan, more or less the public entrance where it is now. This this rectangle in here is the existing building footprint. Um putting in, we could found a place, we could put in a new elevator that would go all four floors and stay underneath the roof of the existing building. With the overrun, um court would be on the ground floor, off to the right, courtroom, waiting area. Um and and the judges' chambers and jury room and and whatever, conference room, whenever it needed on on this side. In the middle of the ground floor seemed to be an ideal place for the the kind of the flexible space, if you will. Whether it's community rooms, enhanced facility, uh enhanced uh resiliency, you know, for people if they need to. Even with FEMA had to come into the library, you know, a place where they could camp out if they needed to, or for families, or groups that need to stay, or to get food, to get clothing, whatever. You know, it could be a number of different types of options. Um and then off on the left hand side, you know, would be the whole, you know, dedicated to police department, you know. Public separate entrance for the public, um you know, some of the escorted public areas where people would come into. Uh tactics and gym, we had some discussions with with chief too, in terms of training needed, both. Classroom type training and actual ac- active training, I guess you call it. Detention, you know, one of the challenges here is working out the crossover of, um excuse me, crossover of um circulation. So this 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 hallway here would be a way to get. Detainees across into the courtroom without going through public areas and crossing over. Uh the judges change back here, they'd have a separate entrance into the courtroom, and the public would have its own entrance into the courtroom. Um there's still some fine points of detail, five points of detail to work out, but you know, that's essentially how it works out. And then really connecting the two in front of the building is, there's an opportunity for a a covered arcade. And and really, without the parking lot in front of the police station as it is now. This could become kind of a village green area, and you'll you'll see that in some of the, in some of the rendering, so.
So, so the covered arcade would um help us with the lines that form during court, uh during court day?
Exactly. Belted belted area, uh it could also be used for different events, events that would spread onto the lawn, so um. And it does some of the, we like architecture with with the building, uh I guess, Ogie, if you go to the next plan, I'll try to get through these a little quicker. You know, on the on the second floor, basically a public area, or you know, for treasurer, for village manager. Arbor master has some space here, we had some discussion the other day with department heads, whether they need more space or not, but. Um you know, the second floor is really all dedicated to them, um there's a little cutout here because the roof and the ceiling height. Needs to be a little taller for the for the.
Yes.
Courtroom, and then the police department have its own zone over here, um there can be a connecting hallway. Uh with some controlled access, whatever the scene is appropriate, and then the elevator, and they have their own stair. This would be needed for some emergency, I guess, as well. Um go up one more, one. And and this is really kind of a testament of general program areas out, how much space is needed, right? The third floor seemed ideal for the building apartment, kind of just about enough space they need, with a little bit of expansion, building and planning. Each of these areas shown here have their own allotment of conference rooms. You know, so different. And training areas, uh layout, you know, whole department needs some, you know, desks to lay out, large pieces of, you know, large drawings, even what. Yes, we do, um so I think there's attic we go on, so so Ogie, actually, you can go to the next tab over.
Yeah.
Which shows it in three dimensions. So this and we can, I'll start here, we can just kind of scroll, we kind of did some bird eye going around, so. Again, here, that's a library over there, this is uh, you know, uh Prospect Avenue. Uh Hunter parking lot, so over to the left parking deck, uh Mount Pleasant here. And so this is the arcade going across, kind of, it kind of separates potential, potential separating the three zones, kind of memorial. Memorial area, an open village green with the arcade, and then Sculpture Garden that has kind of evolved over there and now a purple sun library. Um legal parking lot over here, purple is at courts. Uh village office is above, and and extending into the existing building, and then the green is the. Um you know, uh building and and planning, and the blue is police. So you can just kind of scroll through these, or just give you a few different views on it.
So it's just just the whole police department is gonna be up to the left there?
As in act, in this, in this scheme, uh and again, this is not necessarily a proposed full design, it was more. To to assess the potential of the site, working around the existing.
Gotcha.
You know, the existing building is part of the Mariner story, right? You know, how historically significant is can be discussed, but it's still part of the story, so if you can work. And and from a sustainability point of view, um there's value, this kind of shows, so. So the the building on the side, you know, these two stories, which is what we needed for the space. Uh allows the existing building to kind of be up above it, the. Arcade kind of connects the building and kind of encaps, you know, incorporates the building into the overall design. So this is a scheme we were working with, um you can keep, keeps going on. Yes. This uh, one more, one more. Uh yeah, there we go, so, so, so this is now what happens on Johnson.
Rentals that we have currently right now. Uh would help offset that. Obviously, this is a big building and a giant, you know, um project. But there is some offset that could be that we could take advantage of.
Couldn't sell one twenty-three until the project was completed though, because we need to move out.
Couldn't sell it until then, yeah.
But all in all, we'll end up saving money, maybe not right now, but we'll end up saving money.
Or in the long run.
In the long run.
But this will also have the ability. So the sustainability part is an important part because um in this plan. We would have the ability to build out a um a commercial sized kitchen as well as showers and restrooms. So that if we do have an evacuation situation again. That we could bring the the individuals who have to be evacuated to this facility. Where we have the police department and we have staff and we have the ability to support them.
And a generator.
And a generator and not the school, because the truth is. You know, we did go to the school and they did have issues during the uh during Ida. But it was because school was out that we were able to go there. If school is in. I don't see us going anywhere near the school. So regardless of whether it's an emergency plan or not. As you know, it was even difficult for the judges to give up this room during that during that period of time, let alone the school. So we really have to think about the fact that um. We may have in the future another evacuation situation. We may have. The need to house, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy or more people. For a period of time with the assistance of the Red Cross and Salvation Army, those kinds of things.
But notwithstanding that. We're not just building a facility in the event that we might have an emergency. It would be a place we could use for meetings. I mean, it would be, it's it's a space that we will, which which we don't have, so it would be.
And and all game night and we spoke last week, uh actually with Dan. Um actually having two. Uh because we have a lot of meetings that are in conflict now because I have two conference areas or two meeting rooms so that. We have a lot of boards and all of our boards could meet, you know, when they need to meet.
Well, they have the courtroom and if we could divide that into other spaces, it would.
We could, yeah, we could. And of course, they could utilize any conference room that we have upstairs because we're not using it, you know, in the evenings, so.
The physical plant in the village. And the the thought given to the functionality of a building has been neglected for at least fifty years.
Yeah, long time.
And it's not getting any better. It's getting worse. Uh you know, Jeff here talking about the condition of one of our buildings this. This building here has literally been falling apart. We've been putting band-aids on it.
We 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 put the brakes on. We did what we had to do to seal up the building. Obviously, you know that the chief was displaced as well as the judges were displaced for a period of time. Um but now that we've remediated their offices, that doesn't necessarily mean we've stopped the issue from happening throughout the building, so.
And you know, we we have a responsibility, I believe, to, you know.
Future.
Prepare for the future and to, you know, leave this a better place uh for Manny's generation.
The youngsters.
Yes, uh because you know, it it it's not fair the way we're leaving it. Yeah, the regatta doesn't work really well. Uh the police department. You would never design a police uh station like we our officers have to use uh if you had to do it from scratch. Now, this building uh was designed as a Saint Michael's home for wayward girls. And uh you know, back at the time where we still use expressions like wayward girls, right? So.
It's true.
You know, it 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 was never designed for what we're using a board and we we have to. I think it's incumbent on us to build buildings. For our future and for twenty-first century.
In in I have not been shy about sharing.
Never, because you could just leave it as I've not been shy.
But I do, I do, I do appreciate the fact that we've gone through quite a few um situations and issues. With this building as well as um other things that we've had to do uh in the short four years that I've been here. But the reality is it's made us um better and smarter to tackle this project now. Because we know what we need now. We know what we need now. Um prior to. The pandemic or Ida, I would have never known that we were going to have an issue evacuating people. And giving them some kind of shelter during that period of time, so.
And we've also learned we can do a lot of work remotely, effectively, if we only have to. It's nice to be in the setting together as well.
Now, the um looking at the, I know this is just, this isn't a design, it's just in a. But the you could put solar on all these roofs, am I correct?
Solar, green roofs.
That's why they're flat.
Stormwater retention, we we sort of lot, we haven't gotten into the details yet, it won't be.
And um we should probably, we should probably uh. Anticipate a room for 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 battery, batteries uh to to just to store energy.
Yeah, I I absolutely, I mean, there's a whole laundry list of things to kind of get into. This, this was still a very. Overall scale uh uh analysis. You know, we're thinking about phasing if we are keeping the police department in here and trying to keep this operating. Obviously, that extends out the construction schedule. Some typically, they have some initial costs, but they may be offset by the savings of trying to end the ending. Uh a challenge of creating temporary facilities somewhere else, right? Um so maybe we'll wait till we have the building, but this is not how much space. Oh yeah, I don't know, if you go back to the.
And and battery storage, I'm not sure if battery storage should be in a public building. Uh as opposed to a li- a set aside or an individual building. Because of the issues with batteries that we've been all kind of aware to recently, right? So keeping that off, not off-site, but close by, but not necessarily in the basement or in the parking garage. Would probably be um something that we could incorporate into this. We just need to, you need to get the right person or the right.
Well, I mean, the the next level of study would be bringing a lot of site engineer.
Right.
Yeah, structural engineer, mechanical electrical, fire protection engineers. Um and and doing test fits. Uh and even looking at parking, I think that I don't want to gloss over parking too much. There's a lot of things to think about in terms of. How much in open lots, secure lots, you know. Uh the garage spaces are not enough for everybody in the building, you know, in 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 the garage, so we have to search for some of that.
But there is a lot across the street and that's for the public.
There's a lot of parking between, there's a lot there. You know, Prospect Avenue, I mean, Prospect Parking, Johnson Street, maybe, you know, right now.
And and maybe there's a higher spot in the village, but this is one of the highest, so.
Yeah, and 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 the space is there. It's it's a large site too, and that's what we saw as we laid it out, so you're right. Get a nice opportunity, get a village green i- in front that that could be used for a lot of different types of activity.
What's what's the next step here?
So many, what? To. Uh ask the board to consider the conceptual uh while we continue to fill in all the details. For the staff, the staff needs and really try to um. Bring down, you know, the levels of of decisions or the 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 complexity of decisions that we have to make uh to move forward. Uh but if the conceptual seems logical and appropriate, um providing that the board. You know, sees that what we've tried to do here, which is we've tried to. Maintain the existing building, built in sustainability, all of that stuff, then we move forward with that.
You're not asking for a board decision to vote on approval of a project. You're asking for a consensus of the board to move forward with the exploration.
Correct, so that at some point, Mayor, I can bring the actual um. Costs and detail to the board.
So you've done the first step, Mr. DeAngelo's here.
Yeah, Greg.
He wants to know if you you want to move on to the second.
Yeah, and the second step is really drilling down into this building and into this project.
And we have a, we have a a. The brackets for lower and upper cost on this, what uh do we have a brackets for the upper and lower, what the offset might be?
Oh, we can have that for the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, this way we'd know the true.
Sure.
Is everybody part of exploring this further?
Yeah, yeah, uh but I would add that I think, you know, we've got a big project with the um filtration plant and. We've got the Army Corps project coming and I think we have to sort of. Explain to taxpayers how this is going to affect them because it's 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 these are big.
This one would compared to the others.
Yeah, the Army Corps is not going to.
The the Army Corps water gets paid out of rents, but of course, you know, that's residents, but this one, this one is more.
And it's, you know, and it's it's cumulative, so I think I think we need to be mindful and set up. Manage expectations.
But you're finally looking at the next step.
Yep. Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, we have to do something and and I mean, we have, we have to do something.
We're gonna run out of time.
But we may not be able to do everything we want to do.
But no, it's the truth. It's the truth. We're gonna run out of time and then and then.
Gonna be too late.
We're gonna have issues, yes, it's gonna be too late.
And it's gonna fall on.
We may have run out of time already, but we're trying to.
Even though all those folks back there. Let it go. A lot of them are my friends, I'm sorry.
And I'm and I'm missing that decade of low interest rates.
Yeah.
So maybe we'll we will catch up to it, but that's how we do it, if we come back down.
Yeah, actually, is there a timeframe? I mean, that might be helpful.
We'll provide that in the next step, so. You give us a few months, we'll come right back and we'll work hard on on getting that. Um we'll include the the. Savings for solar as far as energy savings and and how we can utilize that, those kinds of things as well, alright?
Alright, thank you, Greg. Thank you, Mr. Burger.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh let's quickly go to Mr. Decide, who wants to talk to us about the complaint. He's been waiting patiently.
Hello.
Hello, Neil.
How you doing?
Good, good. Hello, everybody. Um. Thanks, uh I would like to give you an update on the the community survey results. Um we also uh look forward to working with the new trustees. Uh I am pleased that the prior board approved my request to undertake this community survey uh for the comprehensive plan. Um we had started working.
Hold on a second, Neil. Neil, hold on a second. L M C, can you hear Mr. Decide?
It's very low. Also, back here, they say very low.
You can't hear, how about this?
Yeah, we're only listening to the. It's not on the uh, not on the sound system.
All right, Neil, uh talk a little bit more.
Testing, testing, one, two, three.
Better, I think that's better. Uh L M C, did you get that audio?
Great. Testing, testing.
Up from the top.
Okay, well, um uh thank you, I I I I just want to say. Uh I'm pleased the prior board approved uh this request to undertake this community survey for the comprehensive plan. Uh for the the member, the new new board members, uh look forward to working with you and seeing you in person soon uh when it's a little warmer. Um we uh we're very close to completing uh the comprehensive plan. And uh we had a lot of public involvement in in person and online, but it was from three or four years ago. Uh it's it's very valid, but however, uh a lot has changed since that time. And in order for us to feel confident um about moving forward, we wanted a way to. Put the finger on the pulse of community sentiment, goals, priorities, likes and dislikes uh today. And the comprehensive plan, of course, should should reflect that. Um let me put up uh on the screen, um I started. Uh putting together a a presentation uh to communicate the results of the survey. My aim has been to translate a lot of the raw charts and data and pages and pages of open-ended comments that you. That you that you have uh into a. A clear and concise presentation, especially for the public to digest. I think it's really important to just that we communicate these results very clearly and concisely for people. Um and not just, you know, show a a a bunch of. Charts and tables, and so this is just a draft in progress of that. I'm going to click through a few of these slides and I have a few questions for the board as well. Um you'll see that the open-ended comments, there's a lot of them and there's a rich, it's a rich vein of detail and and you know. Through this presentation, we'll 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 mine through that and you can start certainly getting a sense of uh what people are saying by by looking at those comments. Um uh and recap, uh uh just real quickly, the the Public Information Officer, Robert Janito, was was extremely helpful. In 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 promoting the survey, uh uh and so we we wanted to make sure it was promoted equally in English and Spanish. And I can, you know, we can, I can answer more questions about our promotional methods, um if you have any. Uh but we can always, you know, continue to, in in general, for the comp plan and for this and and for the survey, always continue to. To improve the way we reach people. Um uh in in the end, we we uh we had this survey open for about a three-week period. From November fifteenth to December fourth, eight hundred and fifty-one people responded to the survey. Uh we did allow responses from folks who were non-residents, meaning people who own businesses, worked in Mamaroneck. Uh people who visit and shop often, they are part of the community. Um but uh obviously, the majority of respondents is and and we'll have the more detail in 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 this finished presentation about. Uh how many people were were residents and non-residents. And additionally, the survey had some uh logic built in, so if you're a business owner, we ask questions about where your business was and if you had any. Comments about um you know, what could improve the business environment in Mamaroneck and you'll see, you can see that when you sort through the raw data that I provided. Eighteen people took the survey in Spanish. Uh and so this this slide is, I haven't quite. Pr- uh you know, pretty nearly up yet. This is directly from page five on the. On the English version that you have uh on hand. Uh the neighborhoods, which neighborhood do you live in? And this is, I'm I always want to be mindful of. Who the survey is coming from, which parts of the community. And so this shows, these neighborhoods were based on the comprehensive plan neighborhood maps. Uh so I'm not sure how folks identify uh and whether they clearly identify with the neighborhood. There were a number of people who didn't, weren't sure and put other information, but you can see here. Uh the the the, you know, representation of responses, the number, the percentage of people from each neighborhood that that took. Uh that took the survey and and I do want to hear any comments about that in in a minute. Um in terms of re- representation from different parts of the community. So uh this is kind of how uh uh this is a translation of the question. Of of the chart from the raw form into this presentation, how do you feel about each of the topics listed here with respect to the village today? And this is a way you can really gauge, this is starting from the top. Of what's uh the highest level of satisfaction to the lowest level of satisfaction. You can kind of see the, you can dig into this and and see the different. Uh the the different ways people um uh allocated their choices for each one. Wh- who put no opinion, but you can see uh the 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 highest level is the library, public safety, education, the schools. Now, that doesn't mean you don't, you stop investing in them, but it's just, it's that's that's uh that's good to see the 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 the. The um you know, what's, what are people generally pleased and happy with um with respect to the community amongst all the topics? Uh I flipped this around, it's the same same chart just flipped around to show you. The uh the ones that would show the least amount of satisfaction. Um you know, flood protection may not surprise you as being uh, you know, a main topic, but. Uh as being one of the, one of the main topics of of concern um and. Land use and development, now that needs to be defined better. I think. There's some, uh and then utilities and infrastructure as well. So part of the analysis of the open-ended comments will be understanding when people say land use and development. What are they talking about exactly? Uh I noticed, for example, utilities, infrastructure, talks about roads, bridges and sewers. Um often, people also included sidewalks as part of uti- utilities, infrastructure. Although sidewalks is also part of this uh category here, transportation, walking, safety, sidewalks and street crossings. So I'd like, I need to do an analysis of 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 what people are talking about, so I can really come up with uh. A a a a better sense of of defining some of these, that some of these topics that might be a little bit more. Uh vague or hard to, hard to define through just the terminology here. Uh the essentially, so this now is the weighted average. This is where there was a mistake and I had fixed it. Um because I noticed flood protection was turning out to be ha- having a high level of satisfaction, which was not correct. So I fixed the survey, apologize for that mistake. Um but this really is the summary of all the previous charts that told you based on the weighted average of of the. Uh how people feel about the topics in terms of level of dissatisfaction versus the level of satisfaction you go into the right. So this is just another way to convey that information in a clear format. The top uh the top uh five flood protection, land use, utilities, housing, biking. And as you start going in, you know, looking at the open-ended comments, you start looking at what people uh are. You know, how they, how they, I always want to give people the opportunity in these questions to provide comments, so that we get to better define. Uh sometimes these categories are 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 have a lot of complexity to them, and so the open-ended comments. Uh provide people the opportunity to to be clarify what they mean. As far as the what three topics should be the top priorities of the comprehensive plan, I will say uh. One of the main, uh let me go back to that, one of the main things I heard, I just picked out in the comments, it was very hard to pick three, but nonetheless. Um uh uh as as you can see here, the 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 top priorities, flood protection. Uh utilities, infrastructure, land use and development, businesses. And that's stores and restaurant services. I want to dig into the open-ended comments to see. What people are concerned about and what they are thinking about in terms of businesses. Is it just downtown? Is it other parts of town? Uh and then it continues on for housing affordability. Uh and and so, so the job of this presentation will be to dig into some of these things and provide more clarity in terms of what people are. Are are talking about when they say they want to, you know, when when they say that. This this particular topic should be a priority and and businesses and what what that really means. And so uh that's that's the summary, uh that's the the quick snapshot of of the results of the main core of the results. This presentation is, I'm still working on and I hope to uh be able to complete it in the next few days. And have a a full draft of the presentation to share. Ultimately, that this draft, the draft of the presentation, when we finalize it, will be something that we can share with the public as well, so they can see the responses. Um of of their work. So uh any any questions, comments, concerns from from the board?
No, we we when we have that in the first meeting of January, do we have?
Uh I mean, I'll be able to complete it by this week, so uh but I can present it. And we can discuss it whenever, whenever the next meeting is, uh sure, absolutely.
Okay, could you come to that?
Uh yeah, I definitely would love to come in person, yeah.
We miss you.
I miss you all too.
Nice to know.
Yeah, but yeah, I did want to follow the, I guess the second question, the two questions was the question about about um. You know, you you know, you know, uh in terms of the neighborhood representation, you know, some neighborhoods obviously have more population or larger. But uh you know, whether what you thought about this this representation by neighborhoods of the people who responded to the survey. Um and then the second question.
Flo- Florence Park is in Rhineick.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, Hublot, well, they I see calling that a different neighborhood. Uh you you should probably more reflected as old Rhineick, but Florence, but Florence Park in there.
Okay.
I think, I think Florence Park deserves it, so, no, I mean.
I think the reason Rhineck is, I think the reason Rhineck is so big is because people probably from shore acres. And all over the town of Rye just said Rhineck.
Okay.
You know.
Does they go to schools? They 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 saw that and their kids go to Rhineck school, they said Rhineck.
So unless you have, unless they gave their street address, it would be hard to. Um separate that out.
Well, maybe Rhineck is too broad a category.
You Rhineck and in parentheses, list those places like Florence Park.
Yeah, that'd be easier to like, like identify. As you talk about Rhineck, I mean, uh shore acres. Those have a a or or, you know, that much in common with uh with.
I would also um put an area that is, because some people who live like um near the M A S area. Don't necessarily consider themselves Washingtonville on the flats, especially people who are new to this area. So that would be different because they possibly put an other and did not know where to fit in.
Okay.
And then along Boston Plus Road, there's areas that like not even shore acres, but.
But it just depends on whether whether people gave a specific street, because if they didn't, it's going to be hard for Neil to.
But I don't I don't think it has specific, specific.
You could, I think you could put yours if you wanted to.
I guess what I'm hearing then is that it's, it may not necessarily be an issue of, uh it's it's just the, it's complicated neighborhood names and boundaries. And people define things different ways, so.
That's why I think we need fewer categories to pick from. I think it should just be.
Could there be a map a- associated with it, so that possibly then you can categorize it the way you want to categorize. And then people can see where they are and then say this section maybe is, you know, rather than.
The survey is closed.
Yeah.
I mean, but he said he's, oh, yeah.
Right, well, in the presentation, I could include the map just as a reference for people, just this is how, although the the map wasn't in the survey. Um I think I can include a map just to, just to show where these names are derived from and, you know, people can certainly quibble over. Uh over neighborhood boundaries, but I do understand, I think my main concern was just like to hear from you whether. Uh I I I'm already hearing that, you know, it's very, it's kind of hard to determine a neighborhood name. Uh some people just might have, like you said, put Rhineck. My main concern is just, you know, whether. If if these neighbor neighborhood names are very definitive and everybody defines them in that way, then. Then maybe there's more of a concern about how there's so much representation, one neighborhood versus the other one, but I get the feeling is that. That's name, that's not necessarily the concern, it's just that people, people sometimes. You know, identify like as as uh one of the trustees said that they just put Rhineck because that's where their kids go to school, so. I mean, I think, I think you're kind of answering, answering my question in a way about, you know.
But it also could be a concern about the um, you know, for people from certain areas not ha- being represented and they know they're from. So that that is, that could be a concern too. I don't want to discuss that.
Okay.
Right, so can you come in on the first uh meeting in January?
Uh yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions for Neil?
Thank you.
Thanks, Neil.
Okay.
Let's get this over to finish line.
Okay, thank you.
Um it was, oh, he also uh what was this? This zoning thing is also a.
What is that?
Uh civic complex area.
I think Lou is, you're thinking that if I read this right, that the zoning needs to be changed in this area to accomplish what we want to accomplish.
I think so, right?
That wouldn't be.
Well, there wouldn't be, okay.
Well, the only.
I don't know why it appeared there, I mean, I did ask, I did ask.
The reason it would be Neil is because typically, if you're going to make a zoning change, it's better if it's enumerated in the comp plan.
That's exactly, so if the if the intent of the board is to make some changes. Uh specifically regarding this, it should be discussed and included in the comp plan, so when the comp plan is proved. That people understand or know what the intentions are.
So um.
That's why we're talking about the civic complex.
Is Neil aware that uh that this is even good?
He is aware, Neil.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just say, I'll say a few words about that. I mean, I've I've heard, I've heard about this concept for a while now. Of uh a civic kind of a, uh well, it starts with the idea of expanding the C two. Uh to encompass the village properties that uh uh were, which the the architect pretty much looked at, which includes the Hunter Deck. And the the old municipal buildings and and such and. Uh you know, my understanding is of the of that. The general concept of it is 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 kind of a civic complex, which is what you're ultimately showing of the library there already. Um there are some, you know, in the survey results, I think there are some comments uh about, you know, consolidating facilities, but. Um I mean, I in a way, I think both the undertaking of of modernizing, re- you know, redoing village, the village facilities. Uh on that site and integrating them into one building. You know, that's that's one, that's one opportunity, the opportunity to create affordable housing um is another opportunity. Uh rehabilitate, replacing an old parking structure. Um and then leveraging the location of the library to create something that's. Can be pretty remarkable, you know, right at the top of the hill and right next to downtown, so. You know, I see this kind of general, this this general concept that's that's been, you know, I've been hearing about is something that can meet multiple. Uh needs and and goals and the the critical piece being it's village-owned property, especially for um, you know. The the interest in providing affordable housing, creating a new affordable housing is part of this. So the comprehensive plan uh is really the place to start putting the process. This process into on onto paper and so. Um you know, the comp plan would, you know, you can present to start a very general vision of the intention. And then start to consider what needs to, what needs to happen and what what needs to change in order to make this happen. And one aspect of that, of course, is the zoning and and which is currently R five. And so um you know, the the comprehensive plan can, you know, just provide. Very, you know, like I said, a general, a general vision, the intention, and then uh, you know, a set of, you know. What what policies and zoning codes, you know, whether it's the expansion of the sea, expanding the C two into those properties, is that, is that the. That that could be one of the, one of the paths that needs to be taken in order to make this happen. So the comprehensive plan can start to address this on a general level. Um there's a lot of ground that the comprehensive is going to cover, so uh you know, the the degree of attention which it, which it can place on this topic. It will be, will be um like you see in the current comprehensive plan and, you know, to the, you know, in terms of what what level of detail. It contains of various recommendations.
With within several hundred, several hundred feet of of each other. We will have the police, the court, the municipal building, the fire department headquarters, the library and. Uh probably the most municipal parking. Um and future use of of the Hunter tier all in one location. That's really the concept. That we tried to zone in on with um with Neil and putting it into the comp plan. So that that's introduced through the comp, comp plan.
Is is there a a concept or or zoning category that? Uh we can create or or just say that within this, within this civic center zone. That that we have latitude for a variety of different zoning categories or?
I'm not a planner, Lou, but I think the C two would encompass that, but we'll let the planner who's on the phone talk.
Okay.
Right, I think, I mean, that's that, well, that's been the the, the the concept floated has been to expand the C two. Uh because it, you know, it has, it includes a a variety. Uh because it, you know, it has, it includes a a variety of uses. Um but I mean, ultimately, um you know, it'll be. It that that could be, that's one path, that's one path, uh and. You know, at to the degree the comprehensive plan is gonna put this in the process. We just need to look at the C two zoning more and more carefully to make sure it's the it's the appropriate, it's it is the appropriate vehicle to uh. To to address, to move this ahead for the this concept ahead.
Okay, alright.
Alright, thank you.
This, we're in a residential district, right?
Yeah, it's in the R five.
This predates the zoning code.
Yeah, this and across the street too, right?
Right, and so you wouldn't actually, uh municipal use isn't really allowed in a residential.
No, it isn't.
So, I mean, it it's pre-existing, but.
Right across the street is C two.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So. The first building, the.
First building next to Hunt a lot of C two.
Correct, and then the other, no, the the first building is not mayor, and then the other two next to that building are our C two.
Which are resident, which look like regular normal houses.
Correct, and they're actually, it's going, that's actually um a proposed development there for thirteen units, so. So the house, the brick house next to Hunter Tier, that's not the tier and then um. American Legion and and church are also residential, so. They're just not consistent.
It's not consistent with their use.
So we would, we we'd be anticipating changing the zoning to reflect the current reality.
This property into conforming.
Right, and once, once that's done, then you can move forward with some of the things that we've been planning.
Alright, so so Neil, you you get, you gotta, you you got your your marching port uh orders there?
Right, uh absolutely, so I have this map, I had this map handy because I figured it might be helpful, but yeah. Essentially, you can see the C two uh is right adjacent to the R five, so.
Right, it's a C two.
Alright, so so we'd wanna. We just want to extend it.
So it's so, yeah, but this is saying that the C two is that building next to Hunt a lot.
Now, it's, it may be, I'm I'm not.
It's definitely not R five.
No, it's a, it's like a four, it's a four unit building, I think.
Yeah, but it 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 doesn't matter number of units, it's it's.
Do you remember if it is or not?
Well, we can just check in the.
He has a map here that's saying it's in C two.
Yeah, I mean, right, right, it exists.
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, thank you, Neil.
Sure, take care.
Alright, we have stuff that we have to get through before we go into executive session. Now, I'm gonna ask everybody uh to not add anything else in the interim to the. To the agenda, so that we can get through stuff that we're not getting through tonight at the next meeting.
Okay.
And I won't add anything either, and uh Steph, if you have something to add, make sure it's like it has to be. Do you know what I mean? Alright. What has to be for tonight? Okay, uh item two C, Bridge New York application for Short Street Bridge, which is a culvert. Uh rehabilitation, uh quickly.
Yeah, uh we had a inspection, Dr. Owen's here. Our village in the town of Rye, which was responsible for it. I identified that the bridge needs some T L, probably need some T L C. Uh the Bridge New York grant program opened up and uh we've been pretty successful with that as a village and then other. Bridge is a village, so we wanna try and apply again this year. Uh we estimated approximately six hundred ninety one thousand dollars. Uh based on the guidance and the grant application, there may be some flexibility on that, but uh if we were to get this grant, it would. Fund ninety five percent of the cost.
So very fun for having that on for a regular meeting.
Yes.
Thank you, Dan, for doing that work. Declaration of police vehicle as surplus property. Uh when when a, when a uh village vehicle uh becomes uh no longer tenable for our use and we buy a new one. The uh only way of getting rid of it is to sell it as surplus property at an auction and this will allow that to happen.
Seems fine.
Because I found that.
Yep.
Renewal Grant Writing Service Agreement for December twelfth meeting, uh. We hired a grant writer uh a while back and he has brought in a lot of money. Of course, three thousand a month, so.
So let's keep that.
Thirty three hundred now.
So we'd have to knock it out and grab the next two hundred and fifty five years.
Okay. Uh everybody's phone, putting it on. Uh replacement of uh Station Plaza sidewalk. Dan, Jerry?
Mayor, um so everyone or many people know we're doing Holstead Avenue. This week, actually, because of the weather this morning and some other. Tomorrow morning, um and there's been a lot of discussion uh with. Um Dr. Shipper, a resident, as well as a um a vice president of the M T A. Um and uh. Former trustee Dan Natchez. And then when our village attorney, our village engineer started to get uh to look at it, he had several meetings with the M T A. There's a section sidewalk that has what look like precast asphalt pavers uh that were put in probably a long time ago. Uh but to rehabilitate that section um and create an asphalt sidewalk there. Um the price, Dan, can you find the price I'm looking for?
I think it was twenty nine thousand five.
So so.
And that was based on the unit bid pricing. The contract, it's essentially the same scope of work, it's asphalt excavation. Uh and some days that you do for a roll break.
So I didn't want to include it as a change order because I thought that it was important for the board and the public to see. That that small stretch of um uh eight hundred square feet is gonna cost about twenty nine thousand, is gonna cost twenty nine thousand five hundred.
That that's where we were with the um, when we were looking at the.
Yeah, with the pumps, right, that's that section there.
It's a pretty, it's in pretty rough shape.
What bothered me though is that you were removing pavers and and replacing it with asphalt.
Yeah.
And and uh and we should be encouraging the opposite.
So we should be putting papers back?
Well, I I mean, because water goes through pavers and and waters can go through asphalt.
So those pavers were probably there uh with the intent that the water was gonna go through those pavers, except silt and. Debris and salt and all of those things build up. So with those pervious pavers, they had big space in between them, but the key is to vacuum them. Out so that you still continue to have, so that that buildup doesn't occur, where then all of a sudden it doesn't become, it's impervious at that point.
Yeah.
Right, so there's a maintenance, there's a maintenance situation regarding that, um if we did pervious asphalt. Right? Uh we could go that way. We would still have to vacuum it, but it would be less intensive, but it'd be a lot more money. So what we're trying to do is eliminate the concern that Dr. Shipper brought to our attention. Um and just pave it now so that it's um acceptable to walk on. But it's almost thirty thousand dollars, so that's really why we're having this discussion here.
I mean.
Is any of this money coming from the um Army Corps? Is it gonna come back or just this is totally us and are they going to um? Is this their jurisdiction when they start to?
You'll get close, but I'm not sure if they're going to actually. Impact the walkway, and if they do, then they have to replace whatever's in kinds, whatever's there, they have to replace in the store.
Yeah, I mean, it 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 seems unwise to be doing any work in that area when they haven't, you know, even put a shovel in the ground yet.
So that's why we're talking about it now, talking about it now, because it's, you know, almost thirty thousand dollars for a stretch of sidewalk. Where I I wasn't comfortable just, you know, approving a change order for that based on the job.
You know, I I I walk there a lot, I mean, I I I know what it looks like, um uh but um it doesn't seem like.
We need to do something, um but we may not have to go.
What's a cheaper fix? Temporary fix.
I'll come up with a cheap fix.
And is this a problem similar to um Stanley Avenue where the prices have been drastically increasing? Where if we wait a little bit or?
Not necessarily, so so we're using a a current bid from another municipality in order to get Holstead Avenue paved. So that that process, that competitive process of earth has already been completed by the other municipality, so we're taking advantage of. Yeah, so we're piggybacking on that, but unit cost and and you know, the work that's involved. Um it's not just. Slapping a couple of, couple inches of asphalt, they have to remove everything, they have to reset everything, so it's it's a bit of a job.
Can we, can we rip out the pavers and put like uh cinder down or something or gravel or?
We we can do something, if that's what you guys want us to do.
I mean, uh something temporary, I I just think that the Army Corps could commit, rip everything up.
But we we already said it, they do, they have to read, they have their picks it because it's something.
It might be over for a call for to uh divert the.
I think what I'm hearing is is a consensus to find a cheaper alternative.
Yeah, I think so, so I just didn't wanna, you know, I have to bring it to the board because it was a conversation. That board members were having with the public and M T A got involved, so. Um I'll talk to the M T A.
Thank you.
Uh okay. Newer replacement service, uh funding of emergency repairs for West Basin Seawall, uh which is on for tonight.
Everyone has been following, everyone's been following the email chain with the um. Most uh um relevant uh emergency regarding the seawall, uh the seawall, everyone. Knows for a long time has been moving. Uh into.
Into the sea.
Into the sea, into the east, east, uh it was, sorry, West Basin. Uh so when the engineer went there, um he he saw some serious. Issues that have progressed that that are very concerning, including the fact that we had to shore up the buildings, uh because we thought we were gonna have an issue with that. So um we um we talked to two contractors, uh one was unable to do it, the other one was, they're currently doing it now. Working with the tide, sometimes uh working at three thirty, four o'clock in the morning to start because of the tides. But we're getting it fixed and this resolution or the one for the meeting later on is for the funding of that emergency.
How much?
Two hundred and.
Forty six. One of the concerns that I had is that, you know, would, if that wall were to go, that area of the park is all landfill.
It is, and and the buildings, the buildings would be.
And i- i- I don't think it would, it would hold up well to uh the tide.
It is, it's a pretty good picture right here in your packet that kind of tells the story.
Yeah.
And we do have approvals um to replace it in kind. We can't, you know, change too much of it, but we can repair it um to make sure that it's safe, that is uh part of the approvals. We do have um a gangway, we did recover a gangway from Ida. Uh from uh someone who lost the gangway.
Hey.
So we took it.
A rogue gangway?
We took it, yeah. I don't know, we took it under the uh the the locally law called find, diskeepers. So but but once we found out who the owner was, they didn't want it back, so we took it and we're rehabbing that and we're including that in in this project, so.
Is that?
Just washed up.
Yeah, is that it, is that, so is that gang plank A D A compliant?
And um we're coming for some of the uh excess stone from Gerson Avenue Bridge.
So.
So.
I mean. I I think we have to do it, but I I'm 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 very uncomfortable about calling it an emergency because it's been fenced off for a cup. Well, maybe not a couple of years, but I know Hernani did some investigation and some specs about, who's our previous village engineer. So this is again a situation where it's an emergency now, but it it's been brewing for a while.
It has been brewing, we we are, we are aware that it has been brewing, but but now when. We started to see the impact of the buildings and the concrete slabs that were sinking uh at at the buildings. That's when we had to, that's when we had to really do something and it. It could have been time, Nora, it could have been uh um Ida, it could have been.
And we also do have the other grant that we drive from. Uh the Department of State of the L W R P program.
Right.
To do uh major local that Stephen Hall.
Right.
I think it was a uh four hundred ninety five thousand dollar.
But that's not gonna cover this.
So this, that's separate from this, but you know, it is, it has been on our radar and we've been taking steps to.
Well, and I'm I'm just, I'm not surprised McLaren didn't do a bid because they don't really do seawall construction. They do bridge construction, but they mostly do like marine design, so um. You know, I just wish we had been able to get more competitive bids, it might not have made a difference, but.
Yeah, exactly, McLaren was already out there.
They don't do this, but they don't do this kind of work, so I'm not surprised.
That's what we were hoping to get a a course from that. Unfortunately, this, despite multiple efforts to.
So so. Because they don't do this kind of work.
But the reality is, I think they're so far behind on the Route One Bridge that they probably weren't permitted to do additional work. So I think that's the situation.
But they also typically don't do seawall work, so that's, you know, they do design work, but they don't do seawall construction, so. Anyway, I just, you know. We're gonna keep having these emergencies, like with community counseling center and with the seawall if we and with. This whole complex, and I know it's a lot for us to to process, but we seem to be just. In very expensive ways repairing emergencies and.
But if we don't.
No, if we don't, it's just gonna cost more.
Gonna be, yeah. It that's.
Yeah, I'm, I I I'm not disputing that, I'm just.
What are you, what are you disputing?
I'm just saying, we have to get better at anticipating emergencies because we, we've had, you know, we're. We have the I N I, we let things, it's, I'm not saying it's just anybody in this room. Just there's been a pattern.
History of the village.
There's been a pattern, yeah, and I think, you know, we're trying to fix things, I think. It'll, it would be great if we could be a little more proactive and.
Well, I think that's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to do, and I do agree with you of being more transparent and um open and honest with the public. They're watching, um that this is what we're trying to do because it needs to be done, so um. And then if they're not listening, is being um being more open to have conversations with them about it, just so that they can be notified and. They're knowledgeable or, so. Good.
Everybody's good with having a sound tonight. This uh and this funny comes from.
You've won.
Marginal surplus or future?
I think that's everything that's on the side. Alright.
Yes, I have. Things I wanted to get to, I get it.
That's the same for everyone.
What? It's all about me. Know that.
Um, okay, uh. I need a motion to go into executive session. Um I'll make a motion. Or litigation update, uh it is anticipated that a motion will be offered to enter into executive session. Pursuant to one oh five one D of the New York State Public Office's law to discuss matters of current litigation. I also make a motion uh to discuss uh United States uh Environmental Protection Agency. Uh versus Westchester Joint Water Works, is an anticipated that a motion we offered to enter into executive session pursuant to one oh five one D. The New York State Public Office's law to discuss matters of current litigation. And also uh litigation for Save the Sound versus Village of America. Is anticipated that a motion will be offered to enter into executive session pursuant to one oh five one D. Uh the Public Office's law to discuss current litigations and in those executive sessions, we could have an advice of counsel. So I made all three motions, I need a second. Or you call roll. That's the is rolling?
Yes.
Guys, a read?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
May Murphy? Hi.
I just, I can I have I have one question, there's something, you you sent a memo for advice of counsel, I assume. And I'm, I just want to make sure that that was. What? I just, but it, you didn't hear it? No, I heard it, I just wanted to make sure that that's what the advice of council matter was, because.
You know, you're on somebody, the 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 matter of best. Uh alright, um we don't, we're gonna go inside or we're gonna do that here?
Not here.
Up here, folks, I'm sorry, I I'm gonna have to ask you to leave the room, L M C T V, you too? Do we have your number?
Thank you.
I'll I'll sex you. These are all the meetings.
You guys, Dan.
I hope all this stuff can go now.
What?
How did you get that? You asked for that?
They do it for me. So I gotta run to me.
Very special of you. Very, very special of you. Because I'm over here struggling, like. I hate these papers.
Yeah, that's. Right, I love watching movies.
It was.
Mighty official.
Everything, everything everywhere I look once, everywhere.
Who's going to?
Excuse me, Lou.
Dan, we're doing the stretch code?
Uh, yeah, the music.
Who's coming up?
Um, Sally has the guys.
Let me tell you something, man.
Tom, I can send you their names if you'd like.
Yes, text me, Sally.
Okay.
So let me get out of the way.
Wait till. Super does some time. We even like, can't put on.
Get your work.
Which one is the new person? You need to get up?
I told you, you gotta be able to shift the bag.
We feel like I have to get up. I'm. Can we already get this?
No.
No.
This was, I think it's just out of the email this early in the day or something, maybe, but. Yeah, yeah, it was like we were told about it. We got a stretch. Hey, they got lucky, man. I almost came in here Nike sweatpants.
I hadn't thought about it.
I was close, I was like.
About it.
I would've got home, so I was like.
Well, you know what? There's gonna be one day where I mess up.
Look, I'm in, I'll sit like a winner. I'm coming in with too short for pants. Yeah, that's.
That was the beauty of.
I got sneakers already, yeah. Trust me, I might, you'll see. It's gonna happen. I can't dress like this every time. This is, this is, this is the law.
All right, folks, you take your seats. It's about the show. When?
Dan, Dan? Also, that Levon is there, thank you.
No, it was a two piece. Thank you.
There we go.
Lifted it up.
That makes sense.
I had to, right, April.
Got it.
Okay, now it's all right. All righty. Good evening. And welcome to the December 12th, 2022, our regular Board of Trustees meeting. Just a little housekeeping first. I need a motion to close the work section.
Go move.
All in favor? Okay. There are emergency exits on my right where the officers are standing, and emergency exits on my left. If you have a cell phone, and I'm sure you will do, please put it on mute. Okay, and please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Hi.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, created in justice for all. Thank you. Tonight, we're gonna go something that's not on the agenda, but it's a, it's a very happy occasion. We are swearing in a new police officer, Officer Ibanez, to the Village of Amerik Police Department. The chief, would you like to say a couple of words about the officer?
Thank you. So Officer Stephen Ibanez is 27 years old and grew up in Queens, New York. A former Ute Neshel at the age of 18. He attended Flushing High School as currently pursuing a degree in justice in John Jay College. Theo Ibanez started his law enforcement career with the NYPD in 2020. He was assigned to police precinct in the Bronx, where he performed patrol duties and actively participated in community affairs. Theo Ibanez comes from a law enforcement family, as both his mother and her husband are detectives for the city of Neshel Police Department. Theo Ibanez is an avid sports fan and a huge Yankee supporter. In his downtime, he enjoys watching sports and spending time with his girlfriend and her two children.
So Ibanez, this is a pleasure. Welcome to the Village of America. Want to take?
Yeah, sure.
Turn it over that way. Raise your right hand. Hi.
Hi.
I solemnly swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the state of New York, Constitution of the state of New York. Rules and regulations of the Village of Amerik, the rules and regulations of the city. That I will faithfully discharge duties of. Sorry. Um, we saw it circa police cops. According to the best of my abilities, according to the best. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, officer. Gentlemen in the back, from the chief to the end, our Village of Amerik police officers were very proud of all of their service. And I'm sure they're proud to welcome a new member. Stay safe, guys.
Thanks for coming.
Good evening.
Hi, ladies. Good night, officer.
Thank you.
All right. Now on to the business of the village. That was the fun part of tonight. We have, we have the presentation on the stretch code. What? Oh, I didn't open the meeting? Jeez. I didn't take a motion to open the meeting.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Swearing is still counts.
Yeah.
Presentation on the stretch code, we have a presentation from Mike DeWine and Christopher Segroy. Is Mike and Christopher on screen? Or? In the waiting room? I do not see them. You don't have no? Yeah, I see it. I see it. They're not there. Okay. So we're going to skip that portion. We're going to go right to the presentation, and if they come back, we'll put them on. Presentation by the Village auditors of Anna Davies. Sally, if you could hear me, just make sure that those gentlemen have the right. The right Zoom meeting?
Yes, sir.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you very much for taking time out of your night. Let us present the results of the May 23 year in. My name is Chris, I'm partner with Pete O'Connor Davies. With me tonight is Barry Miller, the manager on site during, of course, the audit. I'll begin by, the next slide. Talk about the overview and some required communications. We'll talk about your revenues, the expenditure, compared to budget for your general funds. We'll go over your major revenues. We have a little revenue history in here, so you can see some of your expenditures, your major categories. I'll talk about your fund balance in the general fund, see where you're standing. And you also operate some other funds, and we'll talk about fund balances and the transactions you had this year there. And then we'll talk about the statement that position, which is on your government-wide financial statement. So to begin with, we'll talk about the responsibility of charge and governance, as this board. Your main responsibility to select and implement appropriate accounting policies that are appropriate in size and complexity for a village of your type. Make sure that your financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with the US GAAP. Establishing and maintaining the financial internal controls that your assets be in compliance with laws, contracts, regulations. And you provide financial records for us to audit. And then also setting the proper tone at the top. So we look at your board minutes, watch some of your videos, make sure the public has an opportunity to come in and speak to you. So we look at all those things. Our responsibilities, a few more slides. Our responsibilities. Uh, our responsibilities is deliverable, is our independent ownership report. Very happy to take you here, we're here to give a modified opinion, it's the highest level of assurance we can provide to any client.
Say that one more time.
We gave you an unmodified opinion, because of the highest level of assurance we can provide to any client.
Great, thank you.
Uh, we have to have required communications to those charge of governance sets over here. We also issued a management letter. Uh, we also need to communicate any fraud or illegal acts that were pointed out during the course of the audit. They're very efficient when not. We also did fraud interviews of different individuals during the course of every use of it. Uh, we didn't encounter any difficulties in the conduct of the audit. Uh, there are what's known as no uncorrected statements. In other words, if there was an entry that we thought needed to be made, management made all those entries. We didn't have any disagreements. So on the next slide, we have a quick summary of your general fund. So we have four columns here, we have the original budget, the final budget after modifications, your actual results, and the variance for that final budget. So we start all the way on the bottom in the first column. The thing, the second number up is one million eighty-one thousand. So when you adopted your budget, if everything was perfect, you would utilize one million eighty-one thousand of your fund balance to balance your budget. That was made over six hundred thousand dollars that you appropriated during the course of the budget in order to maintain your taxes at the lowest level possible. Along with four hundred eighty-one thousand dollars of unknown encumbrances. Those are purchase orders that were issued near the end of the one year that rolled into the next year and come out of your fund balance. During the course of the year, you can see that number changed up to about five point two eight million. And that was because you got to modify your budget to address all the damage from the various storms that hit the village that year. I believe it was Ida and Henry. So you were able, because over the years you accumulated some terror causes, to address those needs and take that money out so you could have an immediate response to those emergencies. And that amounted to about four point two million that you did modify the budget for both Henry and Ida. Now we go to the third column, things again with the third number up from the bottom, you see one million four sixty-four. So instead of utilizing fund balance of the five point two like planned after the modifications, you actually generated a surplus of one point four million. Returning that money back into your fund balance, again, to address emergencies and to maintain your tax base at the current level. For reasonably close. How did you do that? You'll see that you came in about nine hundred thousand dollars better than budget on your revenues. Now on your expenditure side, you came in about four point eight million better than budget. Now I keep telling you all the good news. Out of that four point eight, you have one point seven million again of those encumbrances. Purchase orders that you issued near the end of the year where the items weren't received yet. But next year, in the twenty-two, twenty-three year, you will utilize that one point seven. So you still had a great year, still return money to your fund balance. And most of those encumbrances are associated with public safety and also your emergency response because the contracts didn't overlap your period. So I'll take you down to specifics now, and I'll come back and talk about your current service.
So just, okay, go ahead, that's fine.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, so this next slide goes through with some of the largest categories of your revenues, just to give you an idea of the more skiffy items. I'll go to the second item, which is the non-property taxes. Those are your sales taxes distributed by the county. See there that you exceeded the budget by about one point one million dollars. Uh, it was about eight percent higher than the prior year. Uh, your parking fees, on the other hand, came in a little bit lower, you had some parking holidays, and also overall it didn't return quite to the level it had pre-pandemic. Uh, permit fees, the variances were not that significant, so we'll go into until there. Your fines and forfeited bail were also less than budgeted. Uh, they did increase compared to the prior year, but not back up to the level again pre-pandemic. Uh, you didn't have as many fines, uh, for, for parking, for traffic. Uh, violations of also bail transfers, uh, bail amounts, uh, or downs, there's not as much bail transfer. And then finally, your mortgage taxes, you exceeded your budget by about two hundred thirty thousand dollars. Uh, through the first half of twenty twenty-two, uh, mortgage filings continue to be very good. Uh, they have since trended down somewhat, uh, given the changes in, uh, interest rates. But, uh, for the period that, uh, under audit for your, your fiscal year, they were still very strong, and so you had, you exceeded that. Um, the next chart, uh, just gives for some historical prep, uh, information, if you want to take a look at it on where are those trends have been over the last three years for those large items. But we'll go into any more detail on that, but just in case you want to ask history. Then looking at some of the larger expenditures and how they vary versus budget. The first item there is your general government support. That's made up of about twenty different supporting departments, things like your finance, your IT, your law department. Those variances of about a million dollars were spread throughout the organization. There was no really one significant item. The one area was in law, you had budgeted to add some permanent positions, which did not happen. Next up, you have police and fire, where you had positive, uh, variances there in the police side. You were a little bit low, uh, lower than budgeted on the personnel, but there were some, uh, offsetting overtime on that. And then, um, you do have other expenditures that you have not paid for yet, but as Chris pointed out about your encumbrances, there are several hundred thousand dollars of encumbrances related to that, so you haven't expended it yet. You have a positive variance, but that will then, uh, be used in the subsequent year. Similar situation in the fire department, you had about two hundred thousand dollars budgeted for equipment purchases that were not actually completed by year end, but those purchase orders have been, uh, have been made. The remaining items, uh, transportation and culture, again, no real significant individual items. It was spread out throughout the different categories of expense. Your emergency response relates to the storms, as Chris mentioned. Again, similar situation, you have about, uh, a million dollars in encumbrances, uh, for that line. Um, so you did save against, uh, your actual expenditures, but you will now incur those, that will roll forward and you'll incur those in subsequent year. And then the remaining items are all fringe benefit related, and those are really related to the other savings that you have. So for example, when you spend less on your, your personnel costs, you're gonna get some social security savings, you can get some, uh, some savings on your pensions. Uh, and then we also, again, just give you a little bit of historical information on some of those major items. You see that really any huge changes in trend, but for your information, if you want to look back and see where things have gone, that will give you a little bit of information there. Uh, that means I'll turn it back over to Chris to talk about fund balances.
I think what's important when you, this is what I was explaining about the variances. Then you have to remember, when you put this on, we were kind of in the middle of a pandemic. You didn't know whether your parks were going to reopen or closed, but you wanted a variety of scenarios to provide service to your residents. So you may think, oh, boy, I really under budgeted or over budgeted. But I think that nobody really knew where anybody was headed when you started this budget process almost two years ago. So I think that, you know, what you did is you, you kind of planned for the worst and hoped for the best. So some of those variances are because, again, you didn't know that things were in person, like parks and wrecks. You didn't know what you were gonna need, especially with all the storms. You modified your budget for the equipment that was lost, the damage. So you have a lot of things going on in the year, so I think you need to take that into account when you look at some of these variances. When we go to your fund balance slide, I think if we just started in twenty-two, you'll see that you ended the year with eighteen point six million of total fund balance, of which fourteen point eight eight is the number directly above it, is what's known as unassigned fund balance. That unassigned fund balance is what you accumulated. And you keep on hand to address emergencies, unknowns that occurred during the course of the year. And you've also used it to keep your tax rates, you know, within the tax cap. So every year you've appropriated some money, you've used it to lessen the burden on the taxpayers. You've taken the surpluses from the prior year, and you've actually, in effect, given them back in a way to keep the taxes a little lower. So when you look at those numbers, your unassigned fund balance is about thirty-five point eight percent of your next year's budget, and your total fund balance is about forty-one point eight. Now, those numbers, again, during the pandemic, from, we've seen that from rural municipalities with the influx of federally and state aid. You know, you have a temporary boost in your fund balance. All those monies that you receive aren't designated for specific purposes eventually. You know, it's, it's not unusual to see some of the fund balances going up. But that shouldn't detract from the fact that you had a very good year. You did well managing your resource share. On the next slide, as I said, you operate some other funds. First one that we'll talk about is your water fund. Maybe with your water fund, you did spend more money than you brought in. Again, that was for the purpose, you transferred about two point two million to your capital fund for the needed capital projects. So were you able to use some of your surplus again from prior years? And you didn't incur bonds, you didn't incur interest costs, and you were able to fund some of those projects. Your capital fund shows a deficit, but that's only an accounting deficit. What happens is you don't get to recognize the revenue until you issue permanent financing. So you issue your share of bonds once a year, but when you issue the bonds for these projects, you'll reimburse the general fund cash, and you'll report the revenue and eradicate that deficit. Uh, your sewer fund really doesn't have much activity. Managing net service fund does have about five point nine million in it. That's money that you've put away into your debt service reserve, and you'll use that to help pay the principal and interest on the bonds that generated those monies. So in other words, if you borrow a hundred thousand dollars for a capital project, you always spend ninety-nine thousand. A thousand dollars being put in debt service reserve can only be used to pay down the debt associated with the, uh, project. And that's it. So again, you had a very good year. You have sufficient fund balance, you have a great fund balance.
Can I just ask you a question about the debt service fund? So at five point eight nine nine, that, that is monies that were left over after a capital project was completed?
It could be from monies that were left over after projects were completed. Now you have a lot of projects.
Yeah.
So it could, it's not like a hundred thousand from a project. The largest portion of it that went in this year is because you had did a lot of road projects.
Right.
And you were able to get the state to reimburse you that money.
Right.
But you had bonded those projects. What happens is that state aid that you received.
Right.
Has to be used to pay down the debt.
Gotcha.
Because the state doesn't reimburse you in advance. So you needed the bonds, you issued the bonds, you did the projects, state reimbursed you like a year later. That money gets put into that service reserve.
Gotcha.
And is used to pay down the debt that you incurred.
Thank you. Hey, just to bring you up to date, the deputy manager was able to get that money in a lot sooner than anticipated. Does she have it?
Yes.
Good job.
Thank you.
Any questions for the auditors? So, you would say flying colors?
I would say flying colors. Very healthy fund balance. Yeah, you had a very good surplus in a very tough year.
Yes.
And, you know, you, and I don't mean that you faced pandemic, but you had flooding, there was two storms.
Jurassic Park.
Right, I mean, you had, you had a lot of issues, and the fact that you had saved up in the past years allowed you that flexibility to address the problems right away and not wait, issue bonds, wait for even money to come in. So, I mean, given those circumstances, you had a very good year.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much, and, and I, I want to thank, uh, clerk treasurer and his staff, and the village manager and his staff, uh, for planning and managing our resources so adeptly. And, uh, you know, I've, I've watched this happen over my tenure in this community, and, uh, I, I, I put a lot of faith in you folks, and you never let us down. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd like to thank also, we just put out it, you would have it all.
Yep.
You know, we rely very heavily on them, and they're very, they're very responsible.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, of the folks on the stretch code, back, let's see if they're. I don't see them. So i- if, if they come back, we, we will put them on. Uh, I'm sorry. We'll try and get, we'll try and get them for the, our next, uh, regular meeting is the, the, the ninth of January, and we'll try and get them on that. I'm sorry, thank you for coming out. Okay, the, the next item on the agenda is communication to the board. Uh, just want to point out that everyone who goes through the mic, uh, gets a five-minute time limit. Um, but please, the, the microphone is yours. Uh, please, if you have anything you want to address the board about. Wait a minute. Sorry, no, I'm saying.
Mayor, board and trustees. My name is Richard Mangone. Two thirty-eight Noelwood Avenue, Amerik, New York. I am the owner of Mangone's Garden Center in Boston Post Road, who has lately come up on your work sessions and your agenda. Um, we thought we were on a work session tonight. Definitely, we didn't, we didn't get to that, but I would like to address you, if I may.
Please do.
And this, obviously, as you know, involves the purported encroachment on the village property. Don't know if you have. Let's see. I'd like to give this speech, one of you.
I'll give it up and go back to the mic so that people at home can see.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes.
Thanks.
Mangone's Farmers Market, Mangone's Garden Center has been in existence since nineteen forty-seven, when my father bought the property. And I've run the business since nineteen seventy-three. The property that is in question here is two-fold. The picture that I just gave you, there's a fence, if you look at the right-hand, uh, right-hand third of that picture, there's a fence that goes from the corner of my property and Toyota City's property all the way across the, uh, the dump area, I'll call it the dump area. I'm gonna say everything to the right of that fence, let's call a parcel A, and everything to the left is parcel B. The fence was put up in the, in nineteen eighties by the village of Amerik, when the village of Amerik was trying to put a senior home on the dump site. There's nobody in this village that knows these parcels better than I do. I was, I was born and raised on these parcels. The dump parcel was, uh, used as a compo site, which I actually ran for the village of Amerik and the town of Amerik for a number of years. Uh, the parcel to the left of the fence, we have been on that parcel since nineteen, uh, as I said, nineteen forty-seven. And the operation has been basically the same for seventy-six years. All of a sudden, um, the village has come in, and the, the way I found out about it was I was approached by two different employees, and I was told that I had five days to get my equipment, and what's been on that property for seventy-six years removed. And if I didn't do it, it would be removed by Vince's garage, and I'd be backcharged for that move. At that particular point in time, I had to hire counsel. Um, when in fact, all this would have took probably was a phone call. Because as it turns out, the property in question for encroachment is actually owned by the town of Rye. Now, I understand that there's some question. However, uh, as of two weeks ago, we did a title search, my attorney did a title search, and it has come back to the, the town of Rye owns that property. As far as encroachment on the village portion of the property, the fence that is in that picture, anything to the right of that fence, which let's call the dump area, has never been encroached by myself. We have never come in contact with the membrane that was put on that property. We have never permeated that membrane that's put on that property. And my understanding is that we're waiting for, you're waiting for a DEC approval, clearance on that land, that you possibly can do something down the road. I don't see why this should hold up any, uh, approval by DEC. And I'd be happy to meet with a representative of DEC or anybody in the village. As I said, all this would have taken was a phone call, and we probably could have eliminated a lot of this. It's that great expense that I've incurred now. And hopefully, we can get this rectified without any more, uh, um, misinformation. Um, I, I'm not blaming anyone. I think that, uh, the village acted on some bad information. And I don't think it's any, any fault of anybody who ever did the deeds. Um, I knew way back when the, when the, uh, senior home was, uh, proposed, that in fact, if it wasn't built, The land would revert back to the town of Rye, which is what's taking place. Um, again, I'm born and raised in this village, seventy six years. My business is probably one of the oldest businesses that still exists in this village. I can tell you my civic duties that I've done over the years. That's pointless at this time. Um, I've been a good citizen of this village. I served on the auxiliary police department for fifteen years, attaining the rank of sergeant. I became on the Parks and Recreation Commission, of which I was chairman for ten years. Been involved in many civic um endeavors in this village. To be treated the way I was treated, the way this came about. I I honestly think is a bore. And I'm hurt. Um, it wa- it was, it was needless to be done the way it was done. And basically, that's all I have to say right now. Hopefully, we can get this resolved before, as my attorney told your attorney some sometime today. Before this spiral is out of control.
Okay. Yeah, I I'm I. I'm sorry uh that this has uh caused hurt feelings and caused angst. And I I I think all of us wanted to be uh rectified as soon as possible too. So we'll work toward that goal.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Again, as I said, I'm here to work with anybody that wants to work with me.
I hear, and I I understand and I I agree with. Thank you, sir. Anybody else would like to address the board?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Robert Stark sent a four-part report. On the still on traffic commission. So I have two issues to discuss. One involves that commission. And the conflict. I'm not here to speak on behalf of the traffic commission, but as a member of the traffic commission, I think it's important. To raise this issue. In September, Mr. Desai appeared at our uh September Traffic Commission meeting. Presented us with some information about the conflict. Uh, regarding traffic. There are twenty pages here involving traffic in the conflict. And if you've seen this, and he said to us. Please, please review this and we should uh weigh in on providing some recommendations that are part of the conflict. This was in September and that he would meet with us. October, we had our meeting. Unfortunately, he wasn't there. At our November meeting, so at our October meeting, we asked that he, whatever he couldn't show up, come at a, a come to our November meeting. Fortunately, our November meeting wasn't held due to lack of a quorum. Councilor, so we didn't meet with him. We have a meeting tomorrow night, uh, traffic commission. I have no idea whether Mr. Desai is planning to be there. Can somebody tell me whether he plans to be there so that we can discuss? The information in the conflict, which apparently the Board of Trustees requested that he take with us.
I I can follow. And I'll let you know.
Fine. My second issue has to do with the. This was included in in your. Work session that you never got to. Board of Trustees' meeting procedures. I think it's great. There are two, two items on here that I have questioned about that I'd like some clarification. I've aged five. One of them, and I'm going to read it. Board members may, with the permission of the presiding officer. Interrupt a speaker during their remarks. But only for the purpose of clarification and information. So somebody who. Has found himself speaking here on various occasions, I'd like to understand a- and. What that means per- for the purpose of clarification or information. Can somebody tell me if I'm speaking and I'm being interrupted, I'd like to know whether. You're doing so appropriately according to this. Um, classification of information seems kind of vague to me. Can somebody give me some clarification so I understand? If I'm being appropriately interrupted.
But it have, could it be based upon mannerisms or is it? Or, I mean.
I I don't have an answer for you. It did, we we'll, we'll review it and uh, thank you.
Okay, my second, my second item is, I'm going to read it. Speakers, speakers. Must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum. Dignity and good taste. I agree with that a hundred percent. So my question is, does this? Request for courtesy, decorum, dignity and good taste. Apply to the members of the board as well. That's a rhetorical question. You don't have to answer. I have one item that I would like to add. To 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 your, and I'm going to read it. Speakers should be treated with respect. And allowed to complete their comments without being subjected to ad hominem attacks. By members of the Board of Trustees. I could give you examples. Uh, situations where I believe. Ad hominem attacks were directed at various speakers, including myself. For those of you who may not understand, ad hominem is Latin, I'm going to explain. Instead of addressing someone's argument or position. You irrelevantly attack the person. Or some aspect of the person. Who is making the argument. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Recker?
Uh, Carlo Recker, Noelwood Avenue, American, the Verk Committee. Congratulations to you members there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here to talk about tonight, the dog park. That's been sleeping about for many years. And in particular, uh, the situation we have today. I'm not in favor of it at the moment, maybe in the future, because I think there are other priorities that we have in this team. And I can list probably a hundred and fifty, but I'm going to give you a couple. For example. Um, the banstead, converting that into a shelter for campers. Rather than having a tent that we've had for years, let's build a structure for the kids. Parks, they sit on it. We spoke about it, Nora knows, Manny knows it as well, and then even yours. We've got Harbor Island, basically, which is going to cost about a million dollars to repair at some point, to replace it. You have Florence Park, which has lots of issues you're going to have to replace, and one on Marshmore as well. So again, I'm talking about priorities. I think those are higher priority lists than dog park. Uh, campers, two hundred and fifty to two eighty. Uh, during the summer. Park down at Harbor Island, I would tell you how many kids go there. Uh, in addition, we can do more street black popping, walkways, uh, studies. We've been talking about parking around it for years. And I've been screaming about a uh structure behind uh. A few. Church going there now, and I was down on Amerenik Avenue on Friday night. Yeah, fine point, Tom. Uh, we're giving it away to commercial. Vehicles as well. Uh, which is, I don't think a good thing, but it brings in money. Cameras. We don't need to talk about that. Uh, we were supposed to get ten initially, I think we're up to twenty eight. We can use a lot more, and you know what took place last week on Amerenik Avenue? And how it helped these gentlemen. To get a criminal off the street, okay? So we need more. In addition, we've been talking about this structure for years. I don't know what to tell you, Tom. Okay, it's a part of the public works, the parks department. I think those are higher priorities than a dog park. Using the funding. For the, those items rather than for the dog park. Eventually, maybe. It also gets me really frustrated. Um, is the county pier. We've been talking about that for years. We had the permits a couple of years ago. Lost the permits. We did, we did, Tom, we lost.
This started to work.
No, we lost the initial permits. Okay, and we got them back. So I want to thank you, Jerry and Dan. For again, reapplying. Because it took forever, okay? But we had them and we didn't do, put the shovel in the ground. And we just got them back yet, rather than going through the whole sequence process again. So. Currently, the recommendation is to put the dog park where the pole is. That's not going to happen, and you know as well as I do. Some county bases wants that as a staging area. For their equipment, for the material. Until the project starts, it's going to take what, three years, I think? Jerry, Jerry, it's not here. So.
Dave, do you know how long it's going to take?
I I can follow by, it's it's like three to four years.
It's because they have to start and stop. They have to, so.
Fish and all.
Yeah.
So.
Look.
Right, this is a slow process. So, dog park at that, uh, towers aren't going to happen, that that pole. Uh, let's see. Ten years ago. We were going to put a basketball court, volleyball court in that area. We held off because the pier is, the pier was the number one priority. And you need that area for the staging area. Now we have pickleball, which is taken off of this country. So we can add that to that area. I was told we have to wait because we got a pier and staging and so forth. So I think that's a. Higher priority than a dog. This is going to help the community as a whole. We have basketball courts at Florence, drums part on and on, stay. And the campers, I think about the campers all the time. Gives them another opportunity to play. And also. More activities. Uh. What we really need is, and I sat on it, in two thousand and four, we had a master plan, basically sat on a shelf for twenty years. Almost. We need a master plan again for Harbor Island, rather than just saying we're going to put basketball court here. Some, you know, dog park there. Send out a certain ways we spoke about, and we spoke about it many years, but this time, implement. Let's do it. Not let's talk about it, pacify Carlo, because like a walkway connected to the east, the west, we don't have. Tom, you could push that stroller. My father can walk on that path. And we can go on and on and on. And also, what we actually need. In addition. And you know, I love to bring money into this community. You know? With the organizations getting charged down there.
Yeah.
They've been screaming about it for years. That flagpole is about seventy five thousand dollars a year there. We should just keep it in the parks and rental department. And we spoke about this before. Manny, you know that too. We should act on it. Let's do it.
I I, I'm sorry, my friend, the the five minutes is up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I saw the bells was working. No problem.
I understand where you're going with this.
Tom.
I.
We'll talk.
Well, I I'm sure we.
And we have spoken, Nora, Manny, we've spoken.
Give me a call before I answer.
No, I will.
All right. Take care, buddy.
Sorry.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, stay well.
Merry Christmas, Carl.
You can stay till, you can stay till the second one, you know?
Yeah, I'm going to.
Okay.
Uh. Anybody else? David, Dan has some.
Yeah, I'm on the, on the master plan for the parks. I was. Given an assignment which I am working on with. Our recreation support tended to. Develop an RFP. For a master plan for the parks. Uh, Jason is a little tied up. Over the last couple days. Uh, some events, and as you know, uh, going on vacation as of Wednesday. But uh, I was able, working with Jason to. Find some RFPs out there to be inspired by. Which. Need to.
Good night, Mr. Michael.
Yeah.
Uh, and uh, we're, we're working on something. We have to draw up the timeline and prepare for getting this out. I know, uh, we've been asked to, this is a priority and we know and we're working on it. As we speak.
The parks department. They were talking about that. Manny's not the liaison, but I went to say goodbye. And uh, that's the.
Yeah, we talked a lot about that in our meeting last Wednesday about. Everybody seemed to have a general consensus that we need a kind of a master plan. And what I kind of spoke to some of the members about is not just for the harbor, but it's our parks in general. Like, we need to look at all of them. We can't just look at our gem of Harbor Island. We need to look at Florence, which is, if you visit that park. The playground is in such disarray, and then, you know, the basketball courts are getting ripped up from the trees that are kind of around there. So I think it's a really big priority that we. Look at all of our parks and kind of come up with a ma- a master plan for all of them.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Dan.
Uh. Just when you go to do that, there is a master plan for Harbor Island Park, as as Carl pointed out, that's on the shelf. Yes, I I was actually on a committee. Yeah.
We never, it's, we never was adopted.
Never was adopted.
Never was adopted.
It was, it was, I spent a couple of years doing it and we didn't adopt it. I wasn't on board when it didn't get adopted. As a civilian, uh. Okay, we're going to public hearings, adoption of PLLI twenty twenty two, lowering village wide speed limits to twenty five miles per hour. So, Dan, we have the information that we needed from uh AKRF?
Yeah, yes. They prepared the. Study or engineer's recommendation. In accordance with the state law. And they identified uh. Where it was appropriate to lower the village speed limit. Twenty five miles per hour. Uh, they they did recommend that it remain thirty on.
Wasn't posted.
Awesome. Well, that's beyond, that's the.
It's beyond the scope.
And Amerenik.
Okay, uh, I need a motion to open this public hearing.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any questions or concerns from the board? From the audience?
All right.
I think that this is a. Way to move the village forward, bring uh conformity, most of the streets in the village of America now twenty five miles per hour. Uh, this, this will bring. Uh, all the streets into conformity and uh the county roads also will be included. Except Amerenik.
And then this.
Yeah. Well, okay, so I make, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, when I make the motion, I just need a second. Oh, you call the roll.
I realize.
Rolling?
Yes.
Guys, you read? Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor, Murphy?
Hi.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
How long is it going to take to um get this change of signs?
Um, I mean, we prepared, I I know when. Uh, when the board. Established the twenty five mile per hour of many streets.
It did in a couple of months.
We had it pretty.
Okay.
So it did, there's probably not as many signs that we need to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do, but uh, we can uh. We're going to be able to.
But just because we we had the public hearing, we don't have to vote against it.
No, we do have to adopt the law. I'll make a motion, we we adopt uh PLLI.
Back.
Oh, my second.
Paulie Call, please. Trustee, Roland?
Yes.
Guys, you read? Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, you've all passed your first law.
Oh, blessings.
That's how it is.
Don't get a ticket.
The next, the next law is a public hearing on PLLJ twenty twenty two. Uh, SCRIA and DRIA programs. Uh, and what what this is. Uh, is, we we've always had this program, but there was a cap on it of thirty five thousand dollars. The state recommended. The cap go up to fifty thousand dollars so that folks. Uh, senior citizens or disabled folks making less than fifty thousand dollars uh can get an offset from their landlords. Uh, on their rent. Uh, and the landlord then offsets that through the village taxes.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. Uh, and you know, to to try and live in the village of Amerenik. Uh, as as a senior citizen and you're making less than fifty thousand dollars, you would definitely not afford it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this affects really a handful of people.
Yeah, just maybe. And people in the program.
I think actually, I'm the newest tonight. Uh, there are several payments, it's about the payment, and I think there's five.
Yeah, at this time, yeah. But just going up to fifty uh grand might widen that pool.
It might, I mean, hopefully it does. I, it's not going to be a tremendous jump, but it will.
So if you're, if you're making under fifty thousand dollars a year, you're a senior citizen or you're, you're a disabled person. Uh, you can apply for this program and you will get a decrease on your rent. And your landlord will get an abatement to cover that decrease so that he or she is made whole.
Yeah, you, the reputation goes through the. New York State Office of Home Community Awards. And they'll, once someone's approved, they'll let us know, and then we start the process.
Awesome, thank you.
I need a motion to open the public, do we open the public here?
I have.
I need a motion to open the public.
So moves.
Second.
Paulie Call. Trustees, Roland?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. All right, uh, any questions or concerns? Any questions from the audience? All right, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Paulie, please. Trustees, Roland?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Okay, I will make a motion to adopt P L L J.
Second.
Who's second? Nora's second. Paulie, please. Trustees rolling?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
I adopted two laws.
Keep on calling him.
Oh, that's not bad. Your first meet. Uh, okay, order the bills.
No, full. There's a transfer.
Uh, order the bills. I got it. Okay, first of all, this is the transfer, a resolution adopting budget transfer to fund repair. It should be Fulton Road. Not Fulton Avenue, retaining one. This is one thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars from the contingent fund to the street uh maintenance contract services. Questions or concerns? Hey, I need a motion.
Second.
Paulie, please. Trustees rolling?
Yes.
Guys, you read? Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Next up is abstracted ordered vouchers and tonight, the, no, no, not, it's the abstract manual voucher, my, my mistake. And tonight it's nine thousand five hundred fourteen dollars and forty-nine cents. And if you look at this, uh, a lot of it is Westchester Joint Water Works, usually manual vouchers or recurring bills. Like the New York Power Authority, uh, Westchester Joint Water Works and, uh, you know, stuff like that.
And utilities, yes.
Alright, uh, like a motion, please, to adopt this? Paulie, please.
Trustee, rolling?
Yes.
Is it read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Okay, the next up is, uh. Ordered. Or vouchers, or what, abstracted ordered vouchers, I'm sorry. Uh, just let me get this out of my binder. And tonight is a hefty night. One million six hundred eight thousand two hundred twenty-two dollars and forty-nine cents. Now, there is a, an item on this that I wanna point out. I believe it's on page number nine. And it is a charge of eight hundred and fifty-five dollars to Gullenberg. Uh, and this was, I believe erroneously, uh, placed on abstracted, uh, ordered vouchers. And I will make a motion when everybody's finished their questions, if they have any. To accept the abstracted ordered vouchers less that amount. So all you can do in there for that. It's on page nine. Under Gullenberg. All this is what we receive, yes. Any questions or concerns about the ordered vouchers other than what I pointed out?
No.
Paulie, what is the new number? We'll be safe. One million six oh seven, three sixty-seven, forty-nine. Thank you all. So the new, uh, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the ordered vouchers in the amount of. One million six hundred and seven thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents.
Second.
Paulie, call. Trustees rolling?
Yes.
Guys, you read? Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh, please hand me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Old business, uh, adoption resolution for Village Dog Park, we're, we're holding that off. Uh, the next one is resolution authorizing, uh, execution of First Amendment to wireless cell communications. That's been held till January. Uh, so under new business, uh, for a. Sorry, let me get this page here. A resolution authorizing the submission of an application to Bridge New York to rehabilitate. Short Street Pulbert slash Bridge. You want to talk about that for a brief second with this public? Know what's going on?
Sure, uh, we are looking to apply for a bridge through the Bridge New York Program to rehabilitate. Uh, the Short Street Bridge, which is technically a pulbert. Uh, it's a grant program that can fund up to ninety-five percent of costs. Uh, same program that we, uh, we able to get for those that have any bridge. Uh, the town of Amerenik, kind of the Weyman Avenue Bridge, a town where I got in for the Honor Street Bridge, so. Uh, they are very generous to the village of Amerenik that want for another.
So hopeful.
Several years, so. We get these projects done, we spend our money and they like that.
Great.
And that's six hundred ninety-one thousand dollars, but I may go down at the end with.
Six hundred ninety-one?
Yeah, six hundred ninety-one thousand is, yes, it's based on some of the guidance that the state had in their grant application, uh, documents. But it, it may be lower than that by the time we finally submitted. So I have some budget left to do with this, but that. And this bridge to January thirteen.
And this bridge was built, uh, with money from the federal government in nineteen thirty-four.
Uh, actually, New York State.
New York State.
Right, it was a terror. Uh, so that.
Yeah.
Uh, I can't remember the acronym of.
So that's, that's the state, uh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was, it was a precursor.
Temporary emergency relief agents.
Yeah, it was a precursor to the W P A and.
Probably started by Roosevelt before he went to.
It was, it, it was. It was like a drive run.
I would just point to trust me, Lucas, right?
We are still eating out on the work that President Roosevelt did.
Yeah.
Yes, we are.
Yeah. Uh, just that so one typo, uh, bridge maintenance is spelled wrong, maintenance in, in the second whereas. So if that could get corrected in the final.
Alright, thank you.
Any questions, concerns? This is two.
No, thank you.
Okay, I need a motion.
So moved.
Call the roll please. Trustees rolling?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, thank you.
Uh, the motel licenses are being held. Uh, for those of you who are new to the board, motel and hotel licenses in the village of Amerenik are approved by the village board. Uh, it's usually performer at the beginning of every year. There was a little hiccup here. And we will be, I'm sure, doing that in July.
Wait, I thought you were doing one. I thought you were doing the Amerenik.
Oh, the Amerenik motels, since it's being helped, my bad. Okay, so I need a motion to approve, uh, the resolution, uh, for motel licenses, motel license. Uh, for the Amerenik motel, which is on, uh, Boston Post Road, across from high school.
So moved.
Call the roll, please, all. Trustees rolling?
Yes.
Guys, you read? Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Pardon me. Uh, resolution authorizing sale of surplus vehicle. This is a police department vehicle. Uh, when municipalities have, uh, no longer have use for a vehicle. Uh, they are required by law to auction it all. And this is a wood utility, seventy-two thousand seven hundred fifty-six miles, and it's going to auction. So we approve whether it goes to auction. Any questions? Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Paulie, please. Trustees rolling?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh, item four D, resolution authorizing twenty twenty-three water rates. Uh, we had a presentation, uh, which was. Uh, bolstered by backup from, uh, Westchester Joint Water Works. Uh, about the rate changes and why we needed to raise water rates in the community. Uh, as, as was pointed out, uh, many times, there is a huge cost that's gonna be incurred. By both Paris and the town of American, the village of American, to build a filtration plant. That is required under state and federal law, uh, for all drinking water sources. That are above ground. So this would raise. Water rates in the village of Amerenik. So what is, what was the rate increase? Fifteen percent?
Fifteen, yes.
Uh, one thing about water rates, water rates. Uh, as opposed to, uh, tax, taxes are, they're, they're exempt, uh. They're exempt properties in the Maranik for taxes, right? Churches don't pay taxes, uh, the schools don't pay taxes. Uh, but everybody buys water. So this will be distributed, uh. More equitably through, through, uh. Areas where we usually don't pick up tax revenue, like a, a big user of water in the village of Amerenik is the sewage treatment plant. Uh, the ice house obviously will pay more, uh. Towel with this than a homeowner. So it's actually based upon your use of water. So you can actually control it. I mean, it, it's, it's a, it's a big hit and I understand that, but. We, we have a aging infrastructure, uh, and. When you look at what we're paying for water, as opposed to other parts of the country, we're actually paying a very low rate. And for the best water, if you drank water in any other part of this country, you, you're welcome to come home and drink all water. And it's, uh, it's much better. So with that, anybody have any questions or concerns?
No, I'm gonna take a sip of water, though.
Uh, I need a motion.
Second.
Wow, that's a quick board now. Paulie, please. Trustees rolling?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, thank you all. Uh, resolution, uh, to ex- execute a professional service agreement with Millennial Strategies for grant research and writing services. Uh, Dan, uh, I'd like you to talk about this for a minute because you've been so instrumental. In working with them and getting us a lot of money.
Yeah. To the tune of, over the course of our business formation, in excess of eleven, twelve million dollars in grants that we received. Uh, and we pay Millennium, uh, we're paying them three thousand dollars a month. Uh, now it's thirty-three hundred dollars a month. Uh, but as I mentioned, work session, we didn't get a grant for the next two hundred fifty-two years. Uh, we would break even. But it's, it's a, it's a good, it's been a good, uh, relationship for us, uh, financially, absolutely.
Any questions, concerns?
Have, we've done this for four years and this is the first time they've raised their.
That's correct, yes, the sort of increase since we've there.
They've, they've obviously shown results.
Absolutely.
So, uh, here's to continue the rewarding relationship. Uh, I will make the motion.
Second.
Paulie, please, sir. Trustees rolling?
Yes.
Guys, you read? Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Pardon me, uh, resolution authorizing sidewalk replacement. On Station Plaza, we're gonna hold that off while a staff takes more research. On how to, how best to replace that, to repair that. Uh, four G, resolution authorizing funding for seawall emergency repair. Uh, if you walk down in the West Basin, especially where. In the senior citizens area, all the way down past the Coast Guard area, uh, and further than that. You'll see that the seawall, which was built by the W P A, I understand. Once again, thank you, Mr. President Roosevelt. Uh, is literally falling and ready to go. It's pulling away from the park. Uh, it, it's leaning into the water, uh, a storm or two and we're gonna lose that wall. And we could possibly lose part of the park if that wall isn't there. Uh, so this is, is a very important, uh, repair that we need to do. We need to do it for a while and it's just gotten worse and worse and worse. So like a lot of things in the village of America, uh, you know, putting off, uh. Expenses, uh, expenditures for needed maintenance, uh, has not hurt, helped us in the past fifty years. So. I'd like a motion.
So moved.
Second. Paulie? Trustees rolling?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh, communication to the board round two. Anybody wanna speak?
I don't have the all the time, Paulie. So much. So, Paul, again, so, uh, the revenue, hopefully you guys will think about some money at the harbor. Uh, that they generate. Flagpole, we spoke about many, many times over the years. The second thing, Tom, you and I have young adults at the moment, back in the day when we spoke, one of the community center for our kids. And so we talked about Roger Building doubling the size of it. Uh, they need space down there for, to add programs. Big thing is, I sat on, at hot committee with Danny. Uh, converting sports time into town village owned property. And converting it into some sort of community center slash. Uh, artificial turf that we could rent out. You have to spend money to make money. We would make millions. Millions, because if you go to Mount Vernon, they're a bubble, basically, you go up to Armonk, they're a bubble. They make tons of money. People are usually Mount Vernon twenty-four seven. And in addition, uh, we had someone. I remember, I can't remember how long ago, he came down, he wanted to build structure and be your partner. So maybe we can place that phone call. I mean, Sports Times contract's coming up again. You know what's gonna happen? Danny, remember the first time I was there, we're gonna screw up it. I want that to happen together. Let's call it walk away. You wanted to walk away back then. So again, please, please. Let's do something for the kids. Person has a great record, uh, facility. Ryan has a great, go to Damiata, let's go see what they did last year. Like the, the cannabis there, what they did on their part for their community. It's good for everyone, no matter where you live. But if it's there, they're here for here. It's great for the entire community. Our first segment, that's the ones we yell the most, the stewardess of all. Please, okay?
Thank you, Carl.
Alright, have a great one.
Uh, report from the village manager? Was it foul for the record? Uh, the settlement agreement with, uh, Louis Cures. Okay. Uh, report from the treasurer.
Yes, Mayor. Want to remind everybody, the second half taxes are due. Um, second items is foul for the record is the statement, is the certification of two thousand two election results. Uh, the reverse were Lou Young received three thousand four hundred sixty-seven votes. Lani Yizer Reed received three thousand four hundred sixty-eight votes. Emmanuel D. Rollings received three thousand four hundred thirty-three votes. Norman Rosenblum received two thousand six hundred fifty-three votes. Greg Castarella received two thousand four hundred sixty-seven votes. And Howard Jordan received two thousand three hundred thirteen votes.
Did you say, what, Castro, you said? Two, four, six, seven.
You wanna read it over again?
No, 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 I, I thought you said Frank Castarella.
No.
Okay.
No, uh, no.
Correct.
Frank Castarella.
Well, congratulations to all of you who won and all of you who ran. Uh, I've been in both situations. And it, it's, uh. It's not an easy task, even when you win, but it's, it's definitely hard when you lose. Uh, so. Thank you to the victors. I'm glad to be working with you all and, uh, thank you to the three gentlemen who ran. Okay. What from the village attorney?
They do have a report.
Oh, good.
Just, it's hot off the cross. See, uh, the secret of the Department of State, telling us that only one of the five, which was the tree revision.